Thank you. Our apologies for being a little late today. We were taking care of some business. Prior to the meeting, the Board went into executive session for the following purposes: to discuss collective negotiations with the Buffalo Teachers Federation, to discuss the potential discipline of specific district employees, to discuss pending litigation between the Board and Jane Doe, to discuss pending litigations between the Board and John Doe, to discuss pending litigations between the Board and S.J., and for the purpose of receiving legal advice. No actions were taken. At this time, we will begin our meeting for February the 15th, 2023. Will you please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance? Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, thank you all for coming out. It's always nice to see a full house. It tells us that you appreciate the work that's being done and that you are here to acknowledge people. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. We have a closed agenda moving forward, the Board recognition and the superintendent's update. Prior, after that, we will have comments from the speakers. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Board President, Cotton, Belton, Cotton. I would like to ask if we can begin this meeting just a little different and divert from the agenda in that last May, 14th, to be exact, our city experienced a horrific tragedy. And today, there was sentencing for the person who committed an atrocity at the Tops supermarket that is just a stone's throw away from where we sit this evening. And still, we rise. I'm asking if we would all rise as we show honor and we uplift each of the 10 victims from that mass murder that happened last May and for the three wounded individuals who were also a part of what happened that day. I will say a little bit about each. We have each of the victims on the screen because they matter. We will say their names and a little bit about them. The first, and after each, Board President, I ask if you would gavel after each pause. Okay. Aaron Salter. He was 55 years old. He was the store's security guard and a retired Buffalo police officer. Aaron Salter. Ruth Whitfield was 86 years old. She was the former fire commissioner, Garnell Whitfield's mother, and was on her way home after visiting her husband and had stopped at the store to get something to eat. Ruth Whitfield. Pearl Young was 77 years old and a substitute teacher, a beloved substitute teacher in the Buffalo Public Schools. She loved singing and dancing and ran a food pantry in the Central Park neighborhood for more than 25 years. She was a mother, a grandmother, and a missionary. Ms. Pearl Young. Kate Massey was 72 years old, and she was called "A Beautiful Soul." She used to write for the Buffalo News. Kate Massey. Deacon Haywood Tenney Patterson was 67 years old. He would help drive people who needed transportation to and from the Tops supermarket on Jefferson Avenue. Deacon Haywood Tenney Patterson. Celestine Chaney was 65 years old. She has six grandchildren and one great-grandchild and was a cancer survivor. Celestine Chaney. Roberta Drury was 32 years old and described as "full of life, caring, and happy." She cared about everyone. She was from Syracuse and was visiting the Buffalo, New York area. Roberta Drury. Marcus Morrison was 52 years old. He was a bus aide for First Student. He loved kids and would start every ride with the children by saying, "You all ready to roll?" Marcus Morrison. Andre McNeil was 53, and he was a father at Tops, buying a birthday cake for his three-year-old son. Andre McNeil. Geraldine Tally was 62 years old and was about to become a first-time grandmother. Geraldine Tally. There were also three Tops associates that were wounded and injured physically and emotionally. I believe that their lives probably are changed forevermore. Zaire Goodman is 20 years old. Zaire Goodman. Christopher Brayden is 55 years old. Christopher Brayden. And Jennifer Waring, Warrington, is also 50 years old. Jennifer Warrington. And still, we rise. Buffalo is a city that is resilient, and we will continue to rise, to care about each other, and to be better. It was in this space that served as a reunification space when that incident happened, and there were many of us that were here that evening, until late in the evening, trying to find out how people were, reuniting families, families identifying their loved ones. It was a very, very difficult evening. And I don't believe that it's an accident that this meeting had been planned months in advance. We didn't know that on this day that we would be meeting here, that this would also be the day of the sentencing. But I think it is a way for us to come together and to heal and to show that we will continue to support each other. We will never forget the 10 victims, the three wounded, and, you know, really, the entire city that was impacted by what happened. I want to thank everyone for taking a few moments for us to honor and uplift the victims and the three who were wounded. Thank you.
I think we all need to breathe after that and acknowledge that we do have breath. But my heart is heavy at this point. Madam Superintendent, would you move forward? Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask the principal of this amazing school, Ms. Kathleen Shalino, to come forward and to introduce whatever it is that you would like to share with us about this beautiful school.
Good evening and welcome to everyone. I would like to begin by welcoming Madam Board President, McCowsky's very own board member, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, our esteemed board members, as well as our wonderful superintendent, Dr. Tanja Williams, to McCowsky. Thank you for venturing out to Stanley McCowsky Ivy World School tonight. We are honored to have you have selected us as your meeting location. Tonight, I am excited to have Ms. Didria Coleman, who is one of our fabulous teacher assistants here at McCowsky. She is one of seven teacher assistants here who is in the Urban Teacher Pipeline Program, and she is going to be the one introducing our student performance tonight. So I'm going to hand it over to her.
Thank you, Mrs. Shalino. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Didria Coleman, and it's an honor to be under the tutelage of Mrs. Kathleen Shalino. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Superintendent Williams, and all the distinguished members of our school board, our leadership, and our community. We thank you for this opportunity to be able to stand here before you and to present to you one of our fourth-grade scholars. Before I present her, I'm going to read a quote that I feel that pretty much exemplifies one of her core beliefs. This is a quote by Marcus Garvey, and it reads, "A people without knowledge of their past, history, origin, and culture is like a tree without roots." And I selected this quote as it relates to our distinguished speaker because it is one of her core beliefs. In getting to know our distinguished speaker, Lady Sage Izell, and having many conversations with her, it has come to my attention that she is a young lady who loves her history, enjoys talking about her history, and encouraging her peers about her history. So Sage Izell is a fourth-grade honor roll scholar here at Stanley McCowsky Ivy World School 99. Last year, when our school formed our distinguished speaker series, Sage was the first one to volunteer to speak. Now, for those of you, many of you that don't know Sage, Sage is very soft-spoken, quiet, and quite unassuming. So you can imagine that when she hit this platform and she began to speak, she blew us all away. She blew us away with the following topics that she spoke about. She spoke about segregation in the United States. She spoke about the effects of climate change in America. And she also spoke about the educational rights of Black Americans in this country. Those were just a few of the topics that Lady and scholar Sage Izell has spoken about. As a result of her speaking these in the cafeteria around the school, a result of that was that her topics encouraged her peers. It prompted many of her peers to get involved, to create posters, to have conversations about the issues that she presented. And most of all, it drove a lot of her peers to active, to be active in social justice issues. So without further ado, I present to you our distinguished speaker and scholar of School 99, Sage Izell, who will be reciting a poem to you this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent of Buffalo Public Schools, Dr. Williams, Board President, Mrs. Cotton, all distinguished board members, Mrs. Shalino, Principal of Stanley McCowsky Ivy World School 99, and everyone in tonight's board meeting. Thank you for the honor of reciting a poem in your hearing tonight. Before I recite the poem, I would like to give a very brief introduction and my purpose for selecting this powerful poem, "Freedom" by Langston Hughes. "Freedom" is written by the poet Langston Hughes. In this poem, he describes, he describes the time when African-Americans faced huge problems like extreme racism, disenfranchisement, segregation, and other aspects of their regular lives, and how they fought for freedom with a lot of struggle. Consequently, the demand for freedom is still very high, just like in 1949, when Mr. Hughes first published this highly powerful poem. I have selected to read this poem in our hearing as a reminder that freedom and democracy is not going to be realized, realized through compromise or through fear, but that freedom and democracy will be gained through a complete overhaul of the system that has sought to disenfranchise Black Americans at every turn. "Freedom" by Langston Hughes. "Freedom will not come today, this year, nor ever, through compromise and fear. I have as much right as the other fellow has to stand on my two feet and own the land. I tire so of hearing people say, 'Let things take their course. Tomorrow is another day.' I do not need my freedom when I'm dead. I cannot live on tomorrow's bread. Freedom is a strong seed planted in a great need. I live here too. I want my, I want my freedom just as you."
Wow. Dr. Sage Izell. We could drop the mic, snap two times, and we could just leave after that. That was amazing. Are these parents, or are you, no? We're parents.
Mom.
Oh, mom. Great job, mom. Wow. And great job, Ms. Shalino. And great job. Great job to our coach. Say your last name again.
Coleman.
Coleman, who is in our teacher pipeline program. So wonderful, wonderful. Wow. Thank you. So at this time, we have two distinguished previous board members who are here, and they're smiling. Why are you smiling? We appreciate all of the work that both of you did, and, you know, in case you don't know, being a board member, I have a new appreciation since I've sat in this seat for all of the work. It is definitely not something that's a couple of hours a week that they do. It really is a full-time position. We're working on the weekends. They're working me in the evenings. But it's all for children. It's all for children. And so, you know, our past or our president emeritus and the retired Park District Board Member, Louis Petrucci, and I got to know each other pretty good when I was first appointed because we would meet every week. And Lou would come in with a yellow tablet full of things for us to cover. We'd go through one page, and I would think, phew, we got through that. Then he'd flip it, and there would be more. But he was so knowledgeable about so many different aspects within the Buffalo Public Schools. I know that I grew a lot under your tutelage, and so we have something for you just as a small show of appreciation for the work that you did, not only as the board member but as the board president, which is additional work. So we have something that we would like to present you with, and it says, Louis. We're going to take a quick photo with Mr. Petrucci and the board members. Oh, we should go up here?
Yeah.
Okay. So how should we pose?
Should we all say cheese? Ready? Petrucci.
Cheese, number one.
Petrucci. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Can we take a picture?
Can we take a picture? Dr. Izell, yes.
Doctor, Doctor Sage?
Dr. Sage.
And your mom? Did you come up? Who is that friend? Who is her little friend with her?
Come on up, come on up.
Oh.
Come on, Principal, and our buddy new teacher.
Ms. Coleman, Mrs. Shalino.
Thank you. Okay. John Lou.
All right.
Oh, mom, you got to come down. You, come on.
Dr. Sage.
Is this her sister or her friend?
Ms. Coleman's, oh.
Come on over here. Ms. Coleman, where are you?
You should be so proud. You really should.
Speaker, can we slide down a little bit?
I see.
Yeah, can we slide down a little bit so she'll get the speaker?
Yeah. Come on out, come on out. No, no, come on in here. And what about the teacher?
Ms. Coleman.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah.
You're happy now, yeah.
That's right. That's right.
The board members could stay here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful job, this comment.
We also have with us our distinguished North District Board Member, Esquire, Ms. Hope J. And I got to know Ms. J. a little bit because she's really passionate. She is an attorney by trade and very passionate about safety, children, security, wellness. And she invited me to be a part of a committee with the District Attorney's Office, and we got to know each other pretty well, and we did some good work with that committee. And that committee is still happening. It's still going on. So we just want to thank you for all of your years of dedication and appreciation as a Buffalo Public School Board Member. Thank you. I'll take another quick photo. I ask that you just be patient with us. You notice how Ms. J. is smiling now and walking quickly and...
One, two, three. One more. We going to squeeze? Okay. One, two, three. One more.
honor one of our, one of our adult education students, Ms. Shakira Autry, for her heroic lifesaving acts during the blizzard.
Thank you so much, Superintendent.
So how should we pose?
Should we all say cheese? One, ready?
Cheese, number one.
Petrucci. One, two, three. One more. One, one, two, three.
Can we take a picture? Dr. Ezel, yes. Doctor, Doctor Sage? Dr. Sage. And your mom? Did you come up? Who is her friend? Who is her little friend with her?
Come on up, come on up.
Oh. Come on, Principal, and our buddy new teacher. Ms. Coleman, Mrs. Shellino.
John Lou.
All right. Oh, Mom, you gotta come down. You... come on in. Dr. Sage. Is this her sister or her friend? Ms. Coleman's... oh. Come on over here. Ms. Coleman, where are you? You should be so proud. You really should.
Yeah, can we slide out a little bit so she'll get the speaker?
Come on out, come on up. No, no, come on in here. And what about the teacher?
She's my little friend.
Yeah, you're her coach. The board members could stay here. Come on in. Thanks. Thank you so much.
Wonderful job, this comment.
Powerhouse. Wow. She gotta come here, huh? And we also have with us our distinguished North District Board Member Esquire, Ms. Hope J. And I got to know Ms. J. a little bit because she's really passionate. She is an attorney by trade and very passionate about safety, children, security, wellness. And she invited me to be a part of a committee with the District Attorney's Office. And we got to know each other pretty well, and we did some good work with that committee. And that committee is still happening, it's still going on. So we just want to thank you for all of your years of dedication and appreciation as a Buffalo Public School Board Member. Thank you. I'll take another quick photo. I ask that you just be patient with us. You notice how Ms. J. is smiling now and walking quickly and... At this time, I would like to ask Chief Dr. Reynolds to please come forward and to honor one of our, one of our adult education students, Ms. Shakira Autry, for her heroic life-saving acts during the blizzard.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. And yes, you're right. Over the past few months, I'm sure that most of you have heard about a remarkable young woman, Ms. Shakira Autry, who heroically, as you said, angelically rescued a fellow citizen. I'm going to actually ask Director of Adult Education, Mrs. Amanda Velake, to come up to share details, a few details about Ms. Autry. But I first want to lift you up also just a moment, only because several weeks ago... and you can come on up, Mrs. Velake, but we want to just publicly thank you because several weeks ago, I had an opportunity for the first time to meet Ms. Autry in Mrs. Velake's office. And she shared with us her experiences, the rescue experiences. She shared about her hopes, her dreams, and, you know, she shared a bit too about some of the challenges that she's experiencing. What I love most about that moment was that our director poured into this young woman. It didn't have anything to do with the academics that she was learning in her classroom, but she shared personal testimony and experiences that was so moving, and I would surmise was heartfelt for you as well. So thank you, because that's not the sort of thing that we get paid for, but it's the thing that is most impactful when we are working on behalf of students and families. So thank you, Mrs. Velake.
Good evening. First, let me recognize and thank the Board of Education, Dr. Williams, Dr. Reynolds, and our incredible staff at Adult Education for supporting the services we provide our community. By now, most people have heard about Shakira Autry. Ms. Autry is a Buffalo woman who rescued a man, Joe White, during the Christmas blizzard. Joe has developmental disabilities, and she brought him into her home over Christmas to care for him. Shakira is in our Buffalo Public Schools' Adult Education Program, and once she completes our program, she plans to pursue a career in the medical field as a surgical technician. We are so very proud of this amazing person. Once Dr. Reynolds and I had the opportunity to talk with her, the story of rescuing Joe White was very inspirational. More important, though, is her story of her perseverance in life. Like many of our students, she has overcome various obstacles in her life to achieve her goals. And I'm grateful that Dr. Reynolds shared that because I shared with Shakira some of the things I've experienced myself, and it's not where you start, it's where you finish. We have no doubt that Shakira will be able to accomplish anything she puts her mind and heart to. Even after she completes, we are always here to support her in her next endeavor. Thank you, Shakira, for being an ambassador of compassion for all our city. I just wanted to share with you what I wrote her in a thank you note that I gave her just this evening. I gave her an amarillo, a little gift of life for her to be patient and watch grow. And I told her, after Dr. Reynolds and I met you, I told her that we know as educators that we impact and influence lives. Sometimes you hear "thank you" that moment, a day later, months or years later, not at all. Many think to say "thank you" and may not tell you. As we talked, we are not looking for that. But we recognize and we are grateful to recognize the impact you've made. We may be educators as a profession, but all of us are influencers, so thank you.
And we'll just give her a moment.
First, I would like to say, first, I want to say thank God first and foremost for allowing me to wake up that morning to hear Joey's cries. Secondly, I would like to thank everyone for the warm being to invite me here. I wasn't expecting all of this, but I appreciate it. I also want to thank all of my teachers that I've been, over the past year, that I've been dealing with and even helping me through all of my challenges and everything. The little young lady that was here, that was very incredible for what she said. You know, I was raised with my family, you know, always paying forward and make sure that we're always being kind, always make sure we have compassion and love, no matter what the obstacle is. And furthermore, because of everything that's going on in this world, even on a bad day and good day, we should still be listening, we should still encourage people at all times. Sometimes it's okay to listen and just help, just help, jump out, you know? I know it's crazy right now. Like you said today, we're going through, you know, the 10 victims that have passed, and, you know, that was, that was, you know, very, that was a really sad thing for our city to go through, just families in general. Even with the storm that went on, you know, we, I think a lot of people did not expect the storm to happen the way it did. I don't think we second-guessed it. We didn't expect the things that even happened. And within my situation, I did not have my kids at home, but furthermore, I still did not get, it still made me look and listen. And I just thank God and just thank my family and everybody, all of the support that I've been receiving, my family, my friends, just everybody, my children. I can't thank everybody enough. I can't even put the words together, but I will want to say thank you for everything that everybody has helped us with, given me a positive encouragement and words, because even through all of this, I still have my outside life, and I still have troubles too. And as she said, Ms. Amanda, she, you know, poured in her personal life to me, and it made me think, you know, we never know what anybody else is going through. And sometimes just hearing what other people are going through, even if it's just walking by and saying, "Thank you, good morning, how you doing?", you just don't know what that would do for someone. And, you know, we should continue to have this type of compassion throughout the days that we go through. And that's, again, I want to just thank everybody again for having me, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
This is your cousin?
Yes.
And here I stood there to give her support because when I said, "Do you want to say a few words?", she said, "I can't really say anything." I think you hit it spot on. You did a magnificent job, magnificent job. Thank you for everything that you did and for what you shared, the message that you shared. You know, those are skills that you really cannot be taught, you know? Just how to be kind from your heart and to care for other people. That's something that's innate, and you exemplify that kind of light. Thank you for what you did for that gentleman, and thank you for being here with us tonight. At this time, I'd like to bring up Chief David Hills, and he would like to recognize two persons within his department for their heroic acts during a community situation, an unfortunate situation. Mr. Hills?
So I'd like Charles Everhart Jr., and I don't know if Shania Begum is here. And also, we have staff from First Student, if you could come up. We have staff from the Lackawanna Terminal, we have regional First Student managers, and we have staff from our Transportation Department, if you guys could come up also. There was, on Carolina Street, during an afternoon bus run, an afternoon, Cheryl Kennedy called me up and said, "You have to watch this video." And what this video showed is the last student who was being dropped off from their run on their bus, the bus driver's here, the bus aide wasn't able to make it. As they were pulling a couple feet away, doing the bus clearing, putting the thing on the back door, there were shots fired. And this second grader had just gotten off the bus, and instead of high-tailing it out of there, they made sure that second grader got safely to their parent, established communication, and put themselves in a dangerous situation to sustain their commitment to care. And that commitment to care, we see in all our bus drivers. But this was a, watching this, I knew, and Cheryl Kennedy knew, we had to honor this bus driver and bus aide. So thank you very much, and...
I do want to say thank y'all for the kind words earlier about my, I don't know if everybody knows, Zaire Goodman is my nephew, that's my sister's son, who was shot at TOPs. So I really do appreciate all of the good, kind words from nephew, really do appreciate that. Thank you.
I will now ask our Associate Superintendent of our, over cultural and linguistically responsive initiatives, Dr. Fatima Morrell, to please come forward and to share a Black History Month highlight. Dr. Morrell?
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Greetings, esteemed board, Dr. Williams, community. Thank you for this opportunity to bring updates on the Black History occurrences of our district at this time. So I would say, Habaragani, what's the news? And the news is, we are doing a whole lot to recognize the historic contributions and the brilliance of Black people in our country and across the world. So in honor and celebration of Black History Month, we kicked off the month with our district-wide read aloud, where we read "Hey, Black Child" by Yacini Eugene Perkins. And this was read by the fourth grade students to the entire district at Dr. Lydia T. Wright School, number 89. It was amazing. All kindergarten students got a copy of the book to share at home, and we have heard nothing but positive feedback from that occurrence. Then we had, recently, we hosted our MBK Scholars, 120 Scholars, to participate in a performance of Jabari Dreams. That happened at Shade 710 last weekend, and this particular story really focused in on themes of healing and courage after facing police violence within the community. Using rap, history, and humor, students were introduced to historical figures from the civil rights era who teach Jabari how to be fearless and have courage in a world where Black boys, Black and Brown boys, are not safe. So very positive occurrence for our MBK middle school students. At the same time, on that same weekend, we had our Little Sisters from the Uncrowned Queens Little Sisters Project, and they learned about African fabrics and the meaning of patterns that are commonly present within African contemporary and historical fashions. The students were then able to come away from the lesson with an understanding of how people of the African diaspora stay symbolically connected to the continent of Africa through fabrics, designs, and patterns while making connections to the meanings woven into the fabrics by designing their own clothing and modeling their creations. Then we took off for a day to culminate our day at the Birchville Penny Art Center, where our Scholars took pictures wearing their newly created fashions in front of the work of an international artist, Leroy Johnson, and his exhibit, Leroy Johnson's Living Color, which also features the Our Story Project students' artwork alongside his own. And tomorrow, we will bring to you a Black Cultural Explosion at this year's Urban Forum. Our nationally renowned keynote speaker, CNN commentator and author Bakari Sellers, is sure to lead a captivating session. Tomorrow's activities are aimed at accentuating the brilliance and joy within Black history and culture. Traditional music, dance, and an immersive African marketplace will make this event a highlight of the 2022-2023 school year. And last but certainly not least, our office hosted the Second Annual Lorna C. Hill Speaking Contest in partnership with the historic Ujima Theater Company last week. We were graced by our esteemed Board Member, Mrs. McCosey. The district-wide empowerment event for Young Voices showcases the remarkable theatrical talents of our Scholars and introduces them to a canon of Black literature. The partnership with Ujima provided students with multiple opportunities to train under professional, experienced actors, allowing them to enhance their performance skills and prepare for competition. Our Scholars worked for months under the direction of their dedicated building coaches, training for the finals, which awarded the top two contestants. And the other finalists from their buildings, a cultural excursion to New York City to see a Broadway play and be coached on their own delivery of theatrical performances, as well as to understand the entrepreneurship angle of theater. We are excited to, at this time, in tribute to Black History Month, spotlight our finalists, who were our top winners. All the students were winners, everybody was, but there were the top three that we have tonight to pay a tribute to Black History Month for you at this time. Winning in our third place position is Echo Martinez Perez, representing Lafayette High School, Lafayette International.
Um, so, good evening, esteemed board and Superintendent Williams. Um, I am Echo Martinez, and I will be performing "Ballad of Birmingham" by Doug LeBlando. Mother dear, may I go downtown instead of out to play and march the streets of Birmingham in a freedom march today? No, baby, no. You may not go, for the dogs are fierce and wild and guns and jails. Dogs and hoses aren't good for a little child. But mother, I won't go alone. Other children will go with me and march the streets of Birmingham to make our country free. No, baby, no. You may not go, for I fear those guns will fire. But you may go to church instead and sing in the children's choir. She calmed and brushed her night dark hair and bathed in rose petal sweets and drawn white gloves on her small brown hands and white shoes on her feet. She smiled to know her child was in a sacred place. But that smile... But that smile was the last to come upon her face. For when she heard the explosion, her eyes grew wet and wild. She ran through the streets of Birmingham calling for her child. She clawed little bits of glass and brick, then pulled out a shoe. Here's the shoe my baby wore." "But, baby, where are you?"
And bringing to you our second place winner from Performing Arts High School, Joy Perry.
Good evening, esteemed board members and Superintendent Williams. Um, I go to Performing Arts and I will be performing "Let America Be America Again." "Let America be America again. Let him be the dream he used to be. Let him be the pioneer on the plain, seeking a home where he himself is free. America was never American to me. Let America be the dream the dreamers dream. Let him be that great, strong land of love where never kings and tribes retire in scheme, that any man be crushed by one above. It was never American to me. Oh, let my land be the land where liberty is crowned with no false patriotic wrath. For opportunity is real and life is free. Equality is the air we breathe. It has never been equality for me, nor freedom in this homeland of the free. Say, who are you that mumbles in the dark? And who are you that draws your bell across the stars? I am the poor, white fool that pushed apart. I am the Negro bearing slavery scars. I am the red man driven from his land. I am the immigrant clutching the hope I seek and finding the same old stupid plan of doggy-dog might crush the weak. I am the young man full of strength and hope tangled in that ancient endless chain of profit-power game, of grab the land, of grab the gold, of grab the ways to satisfy need, of work the men, of take the pay, of owing everything for one's own greed. I am the farmer bondsman to the soil. I am the worker sold to the machine. I am the Negro servant to you all. I am the people, humble, hungry, mean, hungry yet despite the dream, bleeding yet today. Oh, pioneers. I am the man that never bled ahead. The poorest worker bartered for the years, yet I am the one who dreamt our basic dream. In an old world still a serp of kings, who dreamt a dream so strong, so brave, so true, that even yet its mighty deering seams and every brick and stone, every furrow turned, that's made America the land it has become. Oh, I am the man who sailed those early seas in search of what I meant to be my home. For I have left our Ireland shores and Poland's plain and England's grassy league and torn from Black Africa's strand I came to build the homeland of the free." "The free? Uh, who said the free? Not me? Surely not me? The, the millions darned we today? The millions shot down we strike? The millions who have nothing for our pay? For all the dreams we dreamed, all the songs we sung, and the hopes we held, and the flags we hummed? The millions who have nothing for our pay, except the dream that's almost dead today? Oh, let America be America again. The land never has been yet and yet must be, the land where every man is free. The land that's mine, support man's Indians, Negroes, me, who made America, whose sweat and blood is faith and pain, whose sin at the foundry was plowing the rain, must bring back our mighty dream again. Sure, call me any ugly name you choose. The still of freedom that's not stained from those who live like leeches off the people's lives. We must take back our land, America. Oh, yes, say it plain, America was never American to me. And yet I swear this oath, America will be, and of the rats and ruins of our gates to death, the rape and wrath of wrath and stult of lies, we, the people, must redeem the land, the river, the plants, the mines, the mountains, and the endless plain. All, all, all are stretched of our great green states and make America again."
And we will, yeah. I'm so proud of these, uh, our scholars. They are just second to none, aren't they? I mean, from the young lady that came up earlier to our scholars here, we are, we should just be so proud when we elevate their voices and their power. Um, our lead, our first place winner, Kadija Emberwa, Performing Arts.
Good evening, esteemed board and Superintendent Williams. My name is Kadija Emberwa and today I'll be performing for you a poem titled "Earthrise" by The Amanda Warman. On Christmas Eve, nineteen sixty-eight, astronaut Bill Andrews snapped a photo of the Earth as Apollo Eight orbited the moon. Those three guys were surprised to see from their eyes our planet looked like an earthrise. A blue orb hovering over the moon's gray horizon with deep oceans and silver skies was our planet's first glance at itself. Our first chance to see its shared reality a declared stance and a commonality that glimpse into our planet's mirror. And as stressed junior R. O. urgency, we claimed clearer as we realized that we hold nothing dear than this floating body we all call home. We've known that we're caught in the throes of climatic changes some say will just go away, while some simply pray to strive another day. For it is the observed, the oppressed, the poor who in the disasters declared done, still suffer more than anyone. Climate change is the single greatest challenge of our time. Of this, you are certainly aware, it is sad. But I cannot spare you from knowing an inconvenient fact because it's getting the facts straight that it is to act and not be. So I tell you this not to scare you, but to prepare you, to dare you to dream a different reality where despite disparities, we all care to protect this world, this riddle blue marble, this little true marble, to muster the verb and the nerve to see how we can serve our planet. You don't need to be a politician to make it your mission to conserve, to protect, to preserve this one and only home, to use your unique power to give next generations the planet they deserve. We are chemistry, creative, advocate. We heed this inconvenient fact because we need to be anything but lenient with the future of our youth. And while this is a training in sustaining the future of our planet, there is no rehearsal. The time is now, 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 because the reversal of harm and protection of a future so universal should be anything but controversial. So, Earth, hell, blue, dark, we will fail you not. Just as we chose to go to the moon, we know it is never too soon to choose hope. We choose to do more than hope for climate change. We choose to end it. We refuse to lose. Together we do this and more, and not because it's very easy or nice, but because it is necessary. Because with every dawn, we carry the weight of the fate of this celestial body orbiting a star. And as heavy as that weighted sound, it doesn't hold us down. But he's just grounded, steady, ready. Send environmental movement of this size is simply another form of an earthrise. See it? Close your eyes. Visualize that all of us leaders in this room and outside of these walls or in these halls, all of us changemakers are in a spacecraft, floating like a silver raft in space and we see the face of our planet anew, we relish it. We've witnessed its round, green, and brilliant blue which inspires us to act deeply, wholly. What can we do? Open your eyes. Know that the future of this wise planet lies right in sight, right in all of us. Trust this earth uprising. All of us been light to exciting solutions never tried before. For it is our hope and an uncompromising core to keep rising up for an earth more than worth fighting for. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like the coaches, if I could, um... Noel and Miss, uh, Bu, Bu, the coaches of these scholars. Thank you so much. So, um, at this time, that concludes our Black History Tribute and, um, I just wanted to make sure we recognized them and thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Yes.
What a treat, what a treat.
Thank you. Yes.
For all of us, that was, uh, you know, one of the young ladies said that it is never too early to choose hope. We're gonna take a picture and as everybody's lining up, I, I just have to say as the superintendent, this is a very proud moment and, you know, this is proof that our children are intelligent, articulate, talented, and full of promise. Thank you, Dr. Morrell, for bringing this group of winners, but as you shared, everyone is a winner. You know, in the Lorna C. Hill Speaking Contest, Mrs. Hill was quite a legacy in this community and, you know, all three of the contestants should feel very, very proud of this accomplishment. Congratulations to each of you and thank you again, Dr. Morrell, for the work that you do in finding, finding this kind of talent. And I see you kinda waving because I know it's not all just you. You lead the work, but it is a team effort. And thank the coaches. Come on up. We want to get a picture with all of you. Thank you. I know that we've had quite a few recognitions and all of them worthy. We have one more presentation because we had a very important day, February first, but I believe it goes from the first through the tenth of February. And that day, um, was National or International Hijab Day. And I would like to bring up our very own Superintendent, I'm sorry, I've given you my job. No, we want to bring up the Supervisor of Multilingual Education, Arwa Nassar, to talk a little bit about Hijab Day. I believe she has a presentation that will accompany her as she comes forward to discuss, uh, what this day means and how we celebrated it in the Buffalo Public Schools.
So, thank you for having me, esteemed board members and Superintendent Tanja Williams. I am very excited to be here to present an Extended World Hijab Day. World Hijab Day takes place on February first and it came from a Hijabi who wanted others to understand and know the meaning of the Hijab, of the Hijab. Her name was Nazma Khan and she wanted to create understanding on the first. So, throughout, from the first to the tenth, we had an Extended World Hijab Day. Students, um, can post pictures on BPS Webmaster. They can write paragraphs, take pictures, or be creative in their own way. So these are some things that were presented. As you can see, Ms. Belton Catman. I wanted to add the reason why for World Hijab Day, to create a more understanding of what a Hijab is, to eliminate the fear of a, the Hijab and the meaning of it and to clarify and to create solidarity amongst different people so that we understand and know one another. Growing up in the United States, when I was younger, we never had that opportunity. So to be able to do this is an honor. This is me and Dr. Williams on, um, World Hijab Day. These are some beautiful pictures from our schools. This is School Six. We have fourth graders, uh, that read a story and took pictures. And this is also School Six. You can see, um, a graphic organizer was created based on a story. Pictures were drawn and students took some pictures also and the sentiment. The Bilingual Center, School Thirty-three, had teachers and administrators, uh, wear the Hijab. A second grader at Bilingual, at the Bilingual Center, School Thirty-three, drew her mom in her Hijab. School Sixty-one, um, Mahbuba Sultana sent a picture in her Hijab with friends. Also, School Sixty-five sent pictures with friends and with students. School Seventy-six, the principal and the students took pictures. What an experience, what a connection that they make, what a memory. At School Ninety-four, a pre-K teacher and her aide created a pup, a puppet show for their students. School 97, Frieda Shoudry, took a picture in her hijab. Hutchinson Technical High School took pictures also, and see the smiles of excitement. We also have three people that are going, three students, hijabi students, that are going to come up and tell you what their hijab means to them and what World Hijab Day means to them. Come on up, ladies. My first student is...
Hello, my name is Ali Bakal. Today, I'll talk to you guys about what my hijab means to me. My hijab means to me... Oh, okay, my bad, sorry. Uh, my hijab is a crown. I feel, when I go outside, I feel safe. I can't go out without, like, covering myself. And hijab is only mean headscarf. It also means covering yourself. It means how you present yourself to other people. And there's this big misconception that hijab is only for girls, but it's also for men. They're supposed to, like, uh, they're supposed to cover themselves. They're supposed to present themselves well. They're supposed to cover their awra. On, on World Muslim Hijab Day, I feel close to my fellow Muslim sisters. I feel sad that Muslim sisters around the world are being oppressed because of their willingness toward hijab. And I'm sad that their, their choice of wearing hijab is being taken away from them and their choice to practice their religion. And I wish that people knew that we're not oppressed. We love wearing our hijab. We wear our hijab for our God, and we love it. I started wearing my hijab, like, when I was really young, like, 3, I think. And I, I was surrounded by a lot of hijabi women, and I was excited toward hijab because that's all I've known. And I just wanna, like, I wanna say thank you to my parents for bringing me up with that. And I wanna say thank you to God for choosing me toward the hijab. Thank you.
I am Afnan Pyan from the Hachtek High School. Before I start off, Assalamualaikum everyone and good evening. I would love to share my experience with wearing the hijab in commemoration of Hijab World Day. Hijab is a religious obligation. It is for our obedience and faithfulness to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala commands. But there's also a personal component that is a part of it. It is my daily reminder of my identity as a Muslim. My dress code, my social graces comes from wearing the hijab. I feel protected from all the sinful gaze, self-assured and confident in my character when I wear the hijab. At the age of 12, I began wearing the hijab. Alhamdulillah, my experience wearing the hijab was peaceful enough to allow me to wear the hijab until to this day. This hijab gave me courage and inspiration to keep going and motivate young children to wear the hijab. Speaking of journeys, each person has a unique one. Consequently, when facing difficulties, keep in mind that everything we do and every effort we make is for the sake of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Since wearing the hijab is required by my faith, I knew I would have to do so at some point, and I was free to choose the day. The hijab has given me the chance to educate others about the Islamic way of life and given them another way to view me aside from my outward appearance. As Muslim, we hold the view that this life is nothing but a brief trial ground before we move on to the internal life of hereafter. A believing lady in Islam is aware that the claims made by the uneducated about the hijab causing oppressions are untrue. We aspire to the hereafter and the prospect of paradise. The hijab regulation exists to safeguard us, not to oppress us. May our journey become easier for us. I appreciate your attention to my speech. Happy World Hijab Day. Thank you.
My name is Nora Farida, and I'm a junior in Hachtek High School. I'm very honored to be here today to talk about my feelings in wearing my hijab. As a hijab-wearing Muslim woman, I have come to understand the significance of the heads, of this headscarf beyond just being a physical garment. When I wear my hijab, I feel safe, I feel protected. Significantly, I feel blessed by my God. Living as a minority in a foreign country has its own sets of challenges and rewards. New community, new friends, new teachers, new environment, new everything. My mom always says, "You are living in another person's country. There are many different people here. Wear hijab so they recognize you as a Muslim. Be proud of it." Wearing a hijab can have different meanings and emotions for oneself. And it's also important to respect and acknowledge everyone's personal beliefs and experience. Thank you so much.
And this is what World Hijab Day means to them. And for myself to have the opportunity, which I did not have growing up, to express, to explain, to create a bonding relationship between home and school. It opens up so many doors. It goes way beyond a hijab that you put on your head and cover your hair with. It's dialogue, it's understanding. And before I wrap up, I would like to thank my two leaders in the multilingual department, Jenna Colrick and Jenna Coria Longo, for being with me along, being along with me on this journey. Thank you.
We're gonna take a photo with our three young ladies. Do you wanna stand here? You wanna come up on stage? They have spoken. We will go on the stage. What a great education that was. We're a district that celebrates inclusiveness and diversity. Thank you so much to our multilingual team for bringing those three wonderful, intelligent, beautiful young ladies before us. And that concludes our recognitions for the evening. I don't know if it was acknowledged that this is under Ann Bettatelli. The Ottawa was allowed to put together the PowerPoint and to the, uh, the, everything associated with it. So, what I have asked the superintendent to do, because we started this in 2018, and we have history of every year that it has happened, is that it becomes part of our permanent website under the Culturally Linguistic and Responsible Teaching website. And she has agreed that we will put that initially. Just so you know, we had a board member, a student board member who was Muslim. Fadra was her name. I'm sorry, I can't remember the last name. And as a result, we started the first internet, uh, day here. It started at Da Vinci. The Arab American Businessmen Association provided us with scarves. And we're gonna document that because it's important. Oftentimes, people think that the only cultural relevant things that are happening in this district are related to African Americans, and that's not true. We want to uplift and celebrate all diversity in this district. And that's the power of, of, of the people, respecting each other. So, I wanna thank Ottawa for her work that she did. And I look forward to next year moving it to the next level. Thank you. All right, the superintendent's on the roll here, yeah? I promised to try to be brief. Um, I'm gonna start my update by asking Admire to queue up our Wednesday with Williams video. I think it's only 90 seconds, but it's a very powerful message, and it's from our students. And one of our goals is Goal Number Four. It talks about student voice. And our students had something that they wanted to share with students and staff in Memphis, Tennessee, about resiliency, strength, and support when there's an atrocity that happens in your city, like they had recently with the murder of Tyree Nichols. And so, I will be sharing this video with the superintendent of the Shelby County Schools so that they know that they don't stand alone, that we stand with them. And we know that when something happens in a city, it certainly impacts children, no matter what age, children and staff. So, Admire?
Dear students of Memphis,
We in Buffalo, no painful.
We too have experienced an excuseable violence.
We too understand loss.
Frustration.
Despair.
Hopelessness.
Injustice.
And yes, we have felt anger at a system that is built on the need of repair.
And we know with the tragic loss of Tyree Nichols, your community is going through some of the same emotions.
And the rawness of what we have all witnessed makes putting sentences together to comfort near impossible.
What we do have are words, ones which we hopeful spring to life through the prism of the pain we know you are going through.
Love.
Change.
Healing.
Justice.
Kindness.
Respect.
Opportunity.
Hope.
Our fellow Gen Zers, our reaction to the stowed present rungs of anguish and pain left over from yesterday's generation will create tomorrow's work.
Together, we're gonna build a world where...
Our young people have a lot to say. And I, I wanna give thanks. Keith, if you would just stand. Keith Hughes really was the artistic director behind that. I think that the superintendent in Memphis will be very pleased to receive that. Um, at this time, we, we've had quite a few recognitions. But under my report, I do, I would like to ask Chief David Hills to come forward and to share an update on transportation with us. Admire, if you would queue that up?
First slide? Where is Admire? First slide? So, in 2019, we had about 631 routes. That was before the pandemic. We actually had gone up to 670 at one point. That means that, um, that's every bus that leaves the garage in the morning and goes to maybe one, two, three schools with one driver and hopefully one aide. But every bus. So, we had at one point 670 routes in the morning and in the afternoon. We had gone down a little bit. But that was about 640 to 50 drivers. So, when we had a driver that was absent, there was a driver, a surplus driver to cover it. We started 2021, 2022 with a critical shortage of at least 150 bus drivers. About 25% of our fleet was not able to be, have a driver in the seat to get it to schools. We cut 182 bus routes. We doubled routes to the same building. We adjusted arrival and departure times so that 7:45 buses were arriving at our early schools, picking up at 2:30. We also increased the, um, teacher, or the bus driver wages and signing bonus with first student. Next slide, please. So, this year, we, January 3rd, we started the launch of the Parent Reimbursement. We also have been proposing a three-bell schedule to, that is subject, subject to collective bargaining. First student continues to recruit and retrain drivers. We've gone from 440 to 460... Oh, and my phone died at the same time. Not died, it... Oh, I got, I just, it actually fell asleep, so... Which I know many of you are about to. So, and we went up to about 468, the most recent count. Also, first student secured 21 drivers from various locations. They had to be brought to town, put up in, in a residential setting, passed New York State clearance. And they are going to be here through after February. And then 16 drivers are gonna stay onboard after that. That's a tremendous effort for student. Rob and Sean are still here to make sure we had that relief, particularly during these winter months when we anticipated real issues. Next slide, please. So, out of 29,000 students transported every day, we started out the year on average having, um, 409 of students impacted by either a doubled or an uncovered route in the morning. And on average, about 1,000 students impacted. We are now down to January. We had five students impacted on average in January in the morning, and 137 students impacted on average in the afternoon run. Next slide, please. Now, this is gonna be counterintuitive. Remember, I shared the 631. So, before the pandemic, we had about 1,300 routes when you combine the morning and the afternoon. We were running 892 routes in January, but as we started to have a surplus, we actually were able to increase the number of routes. So, as we started to have more days where we didn't have, we had routes, all the routes covered, we were able to split buses that had extraordinary long times. We were able to take buses that were serving four schools and have them only serve two schools and put another route out for the other schools. We were able to creatively minimize or expand the number of routes by making each route a little bit more efficient because we had the drivers to do that. So, even though we've talked about decreasing the number of routes, we actually increased it to 453 in the morning and 453 in the afternoon because we were able to use the surplus drivers, the out-of-town drivers, to make it more reasonable. Even with that increase, we started the year with, on an average, 13 routes not being covered in the morning and 22 routes not being covered in the afternoon. That means that if a route wasn't covered, multiple schools could be impacted. It could be the first school they go to, the second school, and some routes were covering three schools. So, multiple schools could be impacted. Now, we had, on average, in January in the morning, .1, .1 routes not covered. And 1.99 average. Our transportation staff... Our transportation staff and first student back there, they deserve tremendous credit for that. Next slide. Admire, oh, there it is. So that's the graph. We've seen this every month for December. It's not consistent, there are some high days, but you look at the morning, there are a lot of mornings in December when we had barely any routes uncovered. In the afternoon, it was sometimes we had a lot of students impacted, sometimes less. Next slide. For December, no school had over 10 impacted AM routes. We have, use 10 as our kind of overarching for a monthly goal. For PM, there were three schools that had over 10, or 10 routes, 10 times they were impacted. So, and no non-BPS schools were impacted this level. So you, that's the lowest we've seen. There are some repeats here, 72, 45, and 79 have had, been continuously on this list of schools impacted 10 or more times for the afternoon. Next slide. Just look at that slide. Look at that middle of the month for January, that we came back from the storm and we were adjusting, but as we brought onboard the out of town drivers, as we changed some of the routing around, as we started to see students who, even though we hadn't removed them from the routes yet, they were being transported to school under the reimbursement program, we have seen a streak where morning and afternoon, all routes were covered. And then one bad day. And someone's going to ask me why that bad day. We believe it was a COVID day. So where, so two schools had one, one total impacted AM route. No school had over 10 impacted PM routes, 72 still had nine, 45 had five. There were a couple other schools that had one, but, but no school had over 10 impacted routes. So January, the impact of the driver shortage on education and on the predictability of parents knowing the bus would get there when it's supposed to get there was tremendously increased. And we also started the parent reimbursement program. Dr. Reynolds and her department have done tremendous work to do onboarding, to do trainings. On the Friday, the blizzard was rolling in. Ramona was doing a parent orientation as the wind was at, five minutes after my power went out. So I don't know what happened after that. So, next slide, please. By the numbers, we started with 895, but when we took out the people that were double registers, two kids, same family, we got down to 524. And then we went through the process of onboarding and making sure all the paperwork was filled out for receiving reimbursement. Where we're at right now, 255 participating, which impacts 341 students. Forty-four schools are, are helped by this, and 21 non-BPS schools. So we're seeing, now, I want us to look at the next slide because Ramona, Dr. Reynolds and her team kind of asked the parents that are participating, what's your experience? Next slide, Admire. And this is what families said. Time wise, it's better for me and my son. Reimbursement makes a big difference, and we appreciate being compensated and given this opportunity. It helps pay for the gas and lunches. It saves time and complaining from the bus being late. All I can say, it's a major help in these difficult times. I'm very appreciative. I feel my child is safe, and I don't have to worry about her getting lost or hurt and giving, and giving me peace of mind. So the, the impact has been that it has eased the burden on some of our families, for some of our parents and some of our kids. And that's, at the end of the day, what counts. Next slide. This is a pie graph with a lot of, but it just shows the breakdown of the schools that are impacted. School 32, school 195, school 67 are highly impacted, Frederick Law Olmsted, but this just break down, breaks down the schools. But even if a school only had three kids participating, that means that that route can be shortened by five minutes, by 10 minutes. It allows for those who are remaining on the bus to have a little bit shorter route, and it also allows for the needs of our families to be met in a creative way. We're the only ones doing this. So, that's, that's, and remember, always thank a bus driver, which we had an opportunity to do today with Charles Everhart Jr. The, I do want to recognize, every morning, you see bus drivers who are all alone on those corners, taking students on the bus, and they go above and beyond. When you see one in the afternoon, when you have any interchange with any of our first student staff, any of our transportation staff, those people on the front line, always thank them. We had a situation where I think you know, there was a bus that had to be stopped because a bomb was called in. The whole neighborhood was evacuated. We had Steve Chase from Safety, Kathy Winter were on site, and they got another bus over there because all the neighbors were standing outside saying, what's going on, we're cold, and they got a bus over there for the neighbors. Because that's the spirit of our drivers, of our aides, our safety personnel, of the folks that are dealing with at 4:30 in the morning, 5:30 in the morning, getting those buses ready, rolling. So they don't always get the most warm reception, they don't always get treated with the most respect. Thank a bus driver whenever you get a chance.
We thank you too, Chief Hills, and we certainly do appreciate the partnership that we have with First Student. That's also a part of our strategic plan, appreciating and activating partnerships, goal five. I'm going to ask Chief Botticelli to come forward to talk a little bit about a really great thing that happened here last Friday. It's a partnership with the Buffalo Sabres, and it was very exciting. Admire, if you could queue up some photos. Chief Botticelli?
Thank you. So it was actually very exciting. Last week, the Sabres Foundation, Teach My Kid To Read, and the Western New York Education Alliance teamed up to bring Sabretooth, our mascot, and a number of Sabres here to the school to celebrate the opening of the new literacy hub donated by the Sabres Foundation. Yes, we had some really big names here, it was very exciting. We're also happy to have board member Scott there as well, so I know, I know he had a great time. I walked around with several of the players, it was really exciting. The kids were excited themselves, they got to have autographs, so the Sabres signed picture autographs, and they gave the students free books that they could keep, and then they also donated the hub. So the hub is comprised of decodable text that is culturally responsive. So as we teach phonics, our kids have books to practice with that they can check out of the library, teachers can use them in the classroom, they can use them independently, but it provides students with that extra level of practice. And to know that the Sabres donated it made it even more exciting for the students and the staff, I mean, the staff was excited themselves. It was very exciting for everyone. But they were so generous and so kind to come here, they stayed way past the time that they had anticipated. They were charming, lovely, the kids had a wonderful time. But the most important thing is that it's one step closer for us to achieve our goal, right? The superintendent has set a target for us. By the end of third grade, our students will be proficient readers. So this is just one more resource to get our kids on that road. And we are excited because there will be an additional school receiving a literacy hub in the fall. I won't name names yet, but it's very exciting for all of us. So if you have an opportunity, the literacy hub is actually set up in the library. I think maybe you got to see it a little bit earlier. Wonderful texts available to all the students, the kids are really going to access the decodable text so they can practice those phonics skills, and we're going to have a school full of proficient readers. Thank you.
And Chief Botticelli, if you would just, for one second, talk a little bit about the packets that you will be sending home with our children next week during winter break?
Sure, so similar to what we did over the break in December, we're sending home some practice passages. So in this case, it will be two passages per grade level with about 10 multiple choice questions that the students will answer. So it's practice for our upcoming ELA assessments. So again, we're back in the swing of things, we're very excited. We know this year we're going to show some tremendous growth. So we're giving our kids just one extra step up to practice over the break, stay fresh, and come back ready to roll later in the March. So thank you.
Great work, great work. Thank you. That concludes my report. Well, we were thoroughly entertained tonight. Had a little bit of everything in there, superintendent. Unapologetically, we are proud that we highlighted, highlighted the things that we did today. Oftentimes, we are so busy doing the work that we don't take time to celebrate the work that's being done. With that said, I will move forward in regards to our speakers. At this time, the board welcomes speakers who have signed up to speak at tonight's meeting. Please be reminded that all speakers' remarks must be limited to three minutes or less. We ask that speakers be mindful that this is a business meeting, open to the public, and televised locally. Attendees and viewers include persons from throughout Western New York, including children. The board asks that speakers conduct themselves professionally and that their comments remain civil and courteous, bearing in mind that they will be heard by people of all ages. This is an opportunity for Buffalo residents to address the Board of Education about issues that serve the public interest and district mission, and the board asks that speakers demonstrate appropriate decorum. With that said, our first speaker for tonight is, thought I had that out. Oh, here we go, it's under here. Is Thomas Bertha in the house?
Not here.
Not here? Thank you. Mrs. Schreiber? Not here. Quinn Carroll? Concerned citizen, New York Civil Liberties Union, suspensions.
Hi, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay? Thank you. So, good evening. I want to start off by thanking Dr. Williams for attending an event put on by Connect a few weeks ago. It meant a lot to the students that you listened to their experiences, and I hope that the board recognizes how difficult it can be for students to share issues that they're having. It takes a lot of courage for anybody to speak up in front of a board or with a superintendent like they did a few weeks ago, especially students who feel like their voices aren't being heard. I'm at the New York Civil Liberties Union, and I'm here today in support of the students that have, that we've been working with, who have spoken previously in board meetings. They didn't want to be here today because they've experienced some retaliation in their schools for speaking up. Suspensions and other tactics of exclusionary discipline have been a common topic brought to the board and have garnered a lot of attention at national and statewide levels. It has been shown that the use of suspensions disproportionately impacts black and low-income students, students with disabilities, English language learners. Last month, the New York State Education Department released a report that recognizes these disparities. The Education Department also released recommendations like the elimination of suspensions for students in grades K through 3. Following the last board meeting, I was really excited that Dr. Williams showed her support for the elimination of suspensions for K through 3. You said specifically that this aligns with the Buffalo Public School strategic plan, and that you always align with the recommendations from the Education Department where you can. Given this report by the Education Department, I wanted to ask how you are planning to eliminate suspensions for K through 3 and what action steps you are taking towards this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carroll. Next speaker is Mark Bruno, concerned citizen, parent, teacher.
Good evening, Dr. Williams, distinguished members of the board and members of the Buffalo community. My name's Mark Bruno, I work at Riverside High School, and I'm also a Buffalo parent, a wonderful kindergartner, going to school anywhere now, so I just wanted to acknowledge how just amazed I was by our students tonight. I mean, I was just, just blown away how eloquently they spoke, and it was just, just amazing to see, and I was just so proud to hear them all speak so passionately, and, you know, I'll say this, all of our Buffalo schools are success stories. I don't think, you know, sometimes the public realizes, a lot of our students are coming to schools who are just learning English, and, you know, we're trying to get them to pass Regents exams, and, I mean, this just, tonight just showed me, you know, that there's a lot of things going right in the Buffalo public schools. I just wanted to talk, I did send the board an email at the end of January, and I've worked at Riverside my whole career for close to 22 years now, I just love the school, love the students, it's my, you know, second home, and we've just had some issues with, you know, fights going on in the building, and it seems a lot of the fights are the same students kind of over and over, you know, and they get suspended, and they come back, and, you know, they're just not really being provided with, you know, kind of the help to change their behavior. And I would just like to thank board member McCovey, who came into our school today, and spent quite a bit of time there, and we appreciate that. And to the two board members who responded to my email, Mr. Scott and Ms. Shuda, thank you so much for that as well.
I responded.
Yeah, and, I'm sorry, and thank you for that, too. And I'm just, you know, I want our students to get the help they need, but I also feel that if there's like violent acts being committed in schools, we really need to strongly think about sending some of the students who are involved in these incidents to a state of our, you know, Buffalo School of Support, I don't even want to call it an alternative school anymore, and get them the help they need, and, you know, as their behavior changes, they come back to their home school. You know, all of our schools should be safe and conducive to learning, and we've just had a lot, a lot of incidents at Riverside this year and some other schools around the district, and I just want to work together to kind of find a solution to, you know, to help the students who desperately need help to change their behavior. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Joanne Evans, concerned citizen, bullying.
I'm here again. My granddaughter came here to the Board of Education in March 16th about being bullied in middle, early college, high school. But she didn't get a chance to speak because her principal called her downstairs because he saw her name on the speaker's list. Told her that if, watch the words that she said, because the words that she may say may put a bad influence on their school, and they're trying to get a grant to get their school built. And to get their school built. And if she says something wrong, he will let the other kids and teachers know that it's all her fault. She came home in tears. She would not speak for the Board of Education that day, so Deshaun Boylan, a peer advocate, spoke for her. Till this day, she's still being bullied. On January 11th, she heard some kids in her classroom making bets on her because she was going to be jumped later on that day. She left and told the safety officer, Ms. Garner, about the situation. They put her on an early school bus, which was the metro bus in the front of the school. The bullies seemed to know that, they came onto the bus to jump her, but so happened that the safety officers were still outside of the bus. They removed her off the bus and put her back into the school. As she was walking, the bullies still followed her and tried to still jump her. She continued to run into the building. The door is locked when you enter the building. So someone let the kids back into the school, but the safety officers had to control the children with my granddaughter holding the door so that they wouldn't get to her. She called up and crying and told me to come pick her up. I did. When I got here, she wrote a statement to the assistant principal, Mr. Merritt, and she turned it in to him, I had copies of all those things. And the next day, I called the precinct, because I thought it was reported, but it wasn't. The precinct told me to get a report from the safety officers at the school. When I came to the school the next following day, David Potter, which is the principal, told me that there was nothing written up, he knew nothing about this incident, I had no understanding. So, with that being said, Lashana has not been in school since January 11th of this year. She is out on a medical She is out on a medical leave from her doctor for anxiety. She goes to OLV for help, for counseling there. I went to 33 Ash Street, which is our district for our school, to try to get her transferred. On the application, on the application, it stated, "To get your child transferred with a safe and supportive environment, free from harassment and bullying on school property and on school block of school function, with a medical letter, one a medical head, she can either get transferred medically." I got all that from her doctor. I stated all that in a letter. But yet, I received a letter saying that my documentation wasn't good enough. I don't understand. I had a meeting with Angelo Tucker today at 9:30. Her secretary called me and told me that it was canceled because she was too busy, and they booked me in when they shouldn't have. When they shouldn't have, they had to reschedule. Again, my question is, why is it so hard for a kid to get transferred in a school system when you got these policies and I brought all the documentation and it's still not being fulfilled? And also, when a kid seek help, when a kid seek help and try to get help from their adults inside their school, teachers and principal, it gets swept under the rug to where this kid is scared to almost go to school now. Thank you.
Usually, we hear from all of the speakers, and then I share a response. But Ms. Evans, your sharing was so compelling and heartfelt. I'd like to ask Dr. Brown if you would go outside and have a private conversation with Ms. Evans to see how we can support some of the things that your granddaughter is going through or your daughter is going through.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Thank you, Dr. Williams. Karen Brady, parent, Da Vinci High School.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I wanted to talk about Da Vinci High School. I learned last March, I'd heard the announcement or heard, learned of the announcement and read the press release myself that Da Vinci would be moving to Buffalo State campus in the fall of this year, so in the fall of 2023. In December, my daughter came home with what we thought were at the time rumors, that this was not happening, that Buffalo State would not be ready for us, and that there was no plans, no answer for where they would be going. So, of course, right away, I'm thinking, no, it's rumors. Send out a couple emails. Dead silence. Did not get any response. In January, our parent engagement leader finally called a meeting for January 17. And I just want to publicly thank her for that. She recognized the anxiety, the uncertainty, the stress that parents and students were going through. And she called this meeting, and I really feel that had she not, we still, Da Vinci families would be in the dark today. So, thank you. Thank you for doing that. At the January 17 meeting, unfortunately, we did not learn a lot. The biggest question that I had was, how did we get here? Nobody seemed to have an answer for us at that meeting. So, I left, and I watched hours of archived board meetings, and these, this was the answers that I found. There had been various lease agreements between Deuville and Buffalo Public Schools. And each time, the lease was extended for more years. It seemed like two years at a time. The last one was signed in September of 2020. And I just want to read exactly the lease agreement. This is what it said. "Deuville and Buffalo Public Schools reached a mutual agreement that the landlord's available space on the campus is no longer ideal for, ideal for the continued operation of the school, and that it would be in the best interest of the landlord and tenant for tenant to be allowed a sufficient extension of the term of the lease to enable tenant to find an alternative location for operation of its Leonardo Da Vinci High School." So, this was in September of 2020. Buffalo Schools had two years and 10 months to come up with a solution for us. What I next found out was that there was a presentation in July of 2022, a presentation that, I don't know why they didn't give it to us on the 17th, because it answered a lot of our questions. The first was that a feasibility study had not even been initiated until March of 2022. I was dumbfounded as to why it took so long to initiate a feasibility study. Two analogies were brought up at the meeting. One, that Da Vinci, that Da Vinci was a family. And I thought to myself, if this were my family, I would not wait till the 11th hour to figure out where I'm going to move my family. The other analogy was that Buffalo Public Schools was a business. And again, I thought to myself, if this were a business, how do you succeed as a business when you, again, wait till the 11th hour to figure out where you're going to put people? I just, as of today, I'm still waiting for answers. I've emailed, I've called. The last month, I've spent calling people, emailing people. Board Member McCosey got back to me, thank you, but I still have no answers. I'm not looking for an answer right now as to where the school is going to be, because I get it. It takes time, time that I wish we had used when we knew about it. But for families, don't put us in the same position. Don't give us no time to figure out what we're going to do and how we're going to get our kids to a school. I was told that at the latest, last Friday, I would get a phone call about what the Board had decided to, how the Board was deciding to make this right. I am still waiting for that phone call. I am still waiting for answers. I cannot wait for this Board. I don't know how I'm going to get my kid to school. I'm going to have to find a new job. I mean, I don't know. I don't want, we picked Da Vinci because it was close to our home. My daughter could safely get to school and come back. Everything's up in the air for me. I would like this Board to make it a priority. You've had plenty of time. Please make it a priority. Please answer these questions for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Allison Brady, student, Da Vinci High School.
I just want to speak on matter of placement of my school. I worked hard as a middle schooler to get to the school of my choice. I chose Da Vinci for its academics, community, and location. Had I known, had I known that Da Vinci's future was up in the air, I would have picked another school. It was important to me that I could quickly and safely get to and from school. It was important to me that my peers had the same serious sense of purpose. Now, I'm being told that despite my efforts, this could be taken away from me through no fault of mine. The way that the district has handled this is disappointing, and I feel that I'm not a priority. This is not the first time that I've been disappointed by Buffalo Public Schools. I am upset. First, you allowed this to happen. Now that it's happened, there seems to be no urgency to make this right. I am so anxiously waiting for a return call, and I would appreciate a response. Da Vinci students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Next, Neil Lang, concerned citizen.
Good evening. I'm Neil Lang, President of the Bennett Alumni Association. Our Alumni Association has, I'm working since 2013 to ensure a quality education for Buffalo students through our efforts at Bennett. You know that our goal is to have two highly successful high schools thrive, Louis J. Bennett and Middle Early College, each in their own building. I understand your concern. We don't understand why this important goal hasn't been achieved. We are partners on this journey, and partners communicate. Our organization has attempted to work with district personnel to arrive at our shared goal of moving Middle Early College for September of 2023, thus creating more opportunities for students to excel in programs with proven high graduation rates. All communication between district personnel and our Alumni Association has ceased in spite of our efforts. I am here asking for your help in reopening these lines of communication and to continue our work with the district until this goal is achieved. Imagine two schools with totally different schedules operating in the same building, sharing one gym, one cafeteria, one auditorium, and one library. Not having adequate access to these shared spaces deeply impacts the student experience. For example, if there's a gym class taking place for Middle Early College, halfway through the period, Bennett High School kids are coming in. Not safe. We hear safety. This is not safe. Safe schools are built on relationships. Staff know their students and could not possibly be expected to know those other students. That's where problems occur. Bennett had a super graduation rate, over 92% this past June. Why don't you want to expand this successful program by locating Bennett solely in the building and moving Middle Early College to their own building? We have a graduation rate that's a success. A PTEC grant that puts us in a position to compete for applicants from charter and private schools. The original intention of the grant was that 48 additional students would enroll, but due to space limitations, those students merely displaced non-PTEC students desirous of participating in our software program. Our current space limitations make it impossible for Bennett to compete for non-public school students. The early vision for Bennett has come to fruition. It is past time to expand the model, and the only way for this to happen is to move Middle Early College to have its own building. We know that it is now time for the new 100 that we want in September to get their seats. Placement is working right now. We have many eager, in fact, last year, we had 838 eager eighth graders that wanted to come to Bennett, and they can't because nothing is happening. Our motto is putting children and families first. Parents need assurances that September 2023 placement letters for Bennett will be received in March. This is the first phase of the plan to increase the enrollment of Bennett to the 800 students that this program deserves. We know there is space at School 28, and we know there is space at ECC Downtown Campus. It seems pretty clear to us that the district needs to step up and make one of these sites the solution. As your community partners, community partners, we are always ready to assist in any way that you need. Superintendent Williams, we have seen you make great things happen. Thank you. We know that it happens when we all work together. Can we please meet this challenge together and without any further delay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Next, we have Matthew Cohen, student, All High Stadium.
Good evening. I am Matthew Cohen. I am a senior SBMT member and Student Council member of Louis J. Bennett. One of my main concerns is about All High Stadium. During the past year, we have seen the construction, and we are amazed by how it turned out. We are, as you may know, just recently, our football team won New York State Class AA Champions, and we are very proud of our team, and I'm sure the entire city of Buffalo is, too. My main concern is making sure that we get the proper funding for All High as we want to continue to see it grow and we want to... When other districts come, we want to show that... I guess what I'm trying to say is, we're trying to compete with other districts, and I think it's the kind of time we show off a little bit about what Buffalo can do. While I have the time, I just want to raise something up real quick. Administration gave me the opportunity to be a Student Council member, and I understand that this grants me the ability to be a voice for my fellow students. Over the past couple years, we've had several issues regarding student safety, and it's very concerning. Students should not have to come to school worrying about what's going to happen that day or fear that they're going to get very seriously injured. I just had to protect one of my fellow students on a metro bus the other day because of Middle Early College. I've been working with administration to try to... We have reached out to Mr. Potter, the Middle Early Administration. We have gotten zero response, and we have, our Assistant Principal has reached out several times. My main concern is, I, as of right now, I admit it right now, I fear for the safety of my fellow classmates. I have a gym class that has, we collide with two Middle Early gym classes, and we've been seeing increased amounts of fights. We have Middle Early students who are coming into the gym when they are not allowed to. We barely see security presence in the gym where it is needed. And to this day, the numbers of fights and issues with Middle Early kids threatening Bennett's safety is increasing. And I guess what I'm asking for is, we need someone to step in to assist with Middle Early because administration is not doing anything. And I should not have to come to school fearing that something is going to happen to my classmates or even, just recently, warn my classmates of what they should and should not do just so they can stay safe. So, if we can work to figure out something to make Bennett more safer, it would be greatly appreciated. I know that our administration and students like me would be more than happy to help out any way we can. But it's, I think it's time something gets done so that we can be, feel more safe. But, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. That's an example of how students present to the Board. Next, Kadija Hassan, concerned citizen slash caregiver.
Good afternoon. My name is Kadija Hussein, and I'm a community health worker and family advocate with Community Health Worker Network of Buffalo. And I'm also a caregiver of my younger sibling that goes to Hitech. In this month of love and friendship, we would like to send love and appreciation by highlighting some of, highlighting some of the very amazing staff in our district that a lot of times do not get enough recognition. First, I want to give love and appreciation to our super beautiful Superintendent that our students appreciate very much. I started off, I started off doing this work about eight years ago in my last year as a Buffalo Public School student in I-Prep. I have never saw a Superintendent that makes the time to come out, especially on a Saturday morning, to sit in a circle with students and allow them to express themselves with the intent to understand them. Our students are very thankful and can't stop talking about how amazing it was having you and cannot wait to have you again. Thank you for being an example, sorry, thank you for being an example of the type of leaders that we need in our district. I've always said, with you, there's so much hope. I also want to send thanks and appreciation, appreciation and love to our Board President, Carmen. Thank you so much for working hard on our National Hijab Day and helping our community students understand the importance and beauty of hijab. It was very beautiful seeing so many people come together in solidarity. Ms. Shedrick from McKinley High School. One of our McKinley student THW highlight you as one of his favorite students for making him feel like he is her and that he is, he's a person. Thank you for going above and beyond for our students. Mr. Pierce from Performing Arts. One of your students also highlighted you for your kindness and understanding and compassion. Thank you for going above and beyond for our student. Mr. Catrano, Neil, sorry, I said that bad, from School 6. One of your past students also highlighted you for going above and beyond to understand why his behavior was the way it is and helping fix that. Mr. David from School 18, one of your past students, also highlighted you for taking the time to look at student perspective. We also want to recognize our food staff, food service staff for making sure that our students are well-fed, our janitors for making sure that our buildings are clean, the security guards that notices when our children do not come to school, our bus drivers and aides, and the rest of the very amazing staff that weren't mentioned today. We do have great staff in our district, and we are above and, we are beyond thankful for them. But we also want you to recognize that our program has over 20 students, and only one came tonight because of the retaliation that they have been facing from principals, teachers, security guards due to the last board meeting. from principals, teachers, security guards due to the last board meeting. During the last board meeting, board president Carmen stated that she believed that every single student is capable of speaking on their own and we hundred percent agree. We just ask that staff are fair and not giving consequences when they do. I just want to say thank you so much to the parents and students that came out tonight and highlighted so many of the things that we've been talking about over the past few years. Your voices matter and I hope that change can start today with these students and parents that came tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hassan, and I appreciate your love and appreciation. Next person is Karia Kula, Kulu, student, love and appreciation.
She's not here.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Ed Spadell, parent, special education.
Before I start, I want to say today we learned that heroes don't all wear capes. I mean, today at the beginning it was outstanding to see the leaders in the community who have done things that are unexpected for most people, so they're heroes. And secondly, I'd like to say that even though our transportation has gotten better, first student still is not fulfilling their contract with the district. Now I'm ready to thank you. The last two board sessions, I'd like to thank you guys because I thought you had excellent presentations, starting with Paulette with Jimmy Barnes, great job. Then we went to Tereshuda, thank you for bringing kids escaping drugs into the district, very important. Larry had Say Yes, Say Yes After School, that was great, Larry Scott. Dr. Rivera, I'm excited for what you announced, but I want to tell a little story. So a few years ago, being a parent of special needs, we were always concerned that we didn't have a voice on the board. And then one day, Dr. Rivera announced she was going to run for school board and we were very excited. All the parents of special needs were like, we finally have our hero, we finally have our leader. I just want to voice a couple of concerns that I thought that she could have spoke out for. When CPAC was changed to a parent group, the bylaws excluded parents who did not take specific training from being a voting member. She was silent on that. CSC chairs were removed from the buildings, which affected our children, she was silent on that. Modified sports basketball, we had to get fifteen-hundred signatures. A rally with coaches and students and parents to get that approved, she was silent on that. She did get credit for that, though. She hasn't been to a CPAC meeting in a year. When I spoke about my son begging the board to allow my son to come back to school last year, she was silent on that. When our children did not get OT, PT or speech, she was silent on that. So I'm hoping and I'm praying that whatever happened is in the past and what you're bringing to us now is going to be a success. I want to tell two stories that happened in the last month, this is why I'm concerned. I got a phone call from a parent. Their child was asked to move, to leave the school on November eighth and not come back until they get any evaluation. The child finally went back to school last Friday. When I, when I got involved in this, I got the child a new placement at a new school. It took that school two weeks to meet with the family so the family could be comfortable. We failed, our special, our buildings failed. When I went to the special department, they solved that problem, but it failed at the building level. The second one, I got an email from a teacher, I never met this teacher, she said, please help this grandmother. Her son is now evaluated in a special class, being sent to a new school. She thought it was a done deal that they were getting door-to-door bus service. Well, the school that he was leaving did not produce the proper paperwork to make sure door-to-door service was provided. I got involved, it's solved, but the schools, I shouldn't have had to get involved and this grandmother couldn't attend the meeting. So I'm asking tonight for the district to make the special ed department, tell them that there are parents that can come to the meetings that are certified, that will support those parents and those children to get what they need to get so they can succeed like all the other students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spadell. Last, our last speaker for this evening is Jessica Bauer Walker, parent. Love and appreciation.
Good evening, I do have a student standing with me, but he is not speaking tonight, just to clarify that. My name is Jessica Bauer Walker, I'm the president of the Community Health Worker Parent Association and I'm a parent of two BPS students. Along with my colleague Kadija Hussein, wanted to send some love and appreciation throughout our district. Again, starting with our superintendent who sat with us in circle. We know we've been doing some advocacy and there's been some conflict there and conflict doesn't need to be a bad thing, conflict can be a place to grow from. And despite that there had been some going on, the superintendent came and sat with us and showed us the power of what restorative circle looks like and we modeled that and we talked through issues and we really appreciate you being with us and look forward to more dialogue. This really is an opportunity, when we do restorative and we do it in a right way, when we do circles in an authentic way, it can be really healing and powerful. So we encourage board members or others that may be interested in talking with our students and sorting through issues with us. We welcome you to come and sit in circle with us and we're happy to arrange that. I'd like to lift up some people at my children's schools, Buffalo Academy for Visual and Performing Arts. Ms. Prim, who is the security guard there, has shown my daughter and other students extraordinary kindness, greeting them as the first person. Students who are late, who are oftentimes having challenges, saying, we're glad you're here. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Prim, yes. Mr. Pierce, who's the earth science teacher, is well-loved by the students. He is, he doesn't play, but he is also very understanding and talks to the kids about lots of different things and he's very much appreciated. The teachers are great and the student support team has been great and really supportive as well. School Forty-five, I had just came from a playoff game for our modified basketball boys and unfortunately we lost to Build Academy, but congratulations to them. I wanted to shout out Coach Jim Judge, who's also a seventh grade math teacher, our awesome principal, Jennifer English. Teachers Brandon Ash and Allison Ferletto, who go above and beyond on the PTO, on the school wellness team, doing tons of stuff for the school. Amazing counselor Lisa Wickin, who goes above and beyond. Our crossing guard Wendy Amoya, who is one of the most dedicated crossing guards you could ever meet. She keeps those kids safe, yes, thank you, crossing guard Wendy Amoya. Our food service, Colleen Gilbert. Want to shout out our parent congress on all parents, it is not easy being a parent out here right now. And our parent congress, we take care of our own kids, we looking out for other kids. We're sitting here at board meetings, so shout out to parent congress. And last but not least, our students, our students are amazing, we saw them being amazing tonight. We got a chance to sit with Inner High today and do a presentation on school wellness teams. Thank you, Inner High for having us. And our student community health workers, I'm here with Innocent Koren Ziza and he is our one student that's come out with us tonight. He's amazing, we've been working with these students. These are, these are students who've had a lot of challenges, who would not have an opportunity otherwise. And Innocent has been amazing, many of our other students have been amazing. I do want to affirm that it's important for our students to advocate and talk about issues as well. And they have experienced some degree of intimidation and retaliation and harassment due to the advocacy that they've been doing and that's not okay. So we will be back, our students were feeling reticent about coming tonight. We appreciate Innocent being here and the way that he's advocating and we're asking for your support to make sure that even when we don't agree with our students or the way that they're talking, they're doing it in a respectful way and let's seek to understand and let's lift up all student voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica Bauer Walker. Before the superintendent responds, we're going to ask our student representative to update us this evening, we have Lucy in the house and we are glad to have her back and we appreciate her. Then the superintendent will respond to our all speakers at that point. Thank you.
Before I get into my Inner High spiel that I know you guys are so excited to hear, I just want to say thank you to all the students that came out today. Being a part of Inner High is an amazing thing, but even us in our meetings, we experience students just not feeling comfortable talking and they have so much to say and thankfully I'm here and I can express concerns, but just seeing the amount of people today that came and talked and performed and did whatever they did, like it really does mean a lot to us. I also want to say, as a DaVinci kid, I'm so extremely sorry. It, it's painful to see. As a freshman, when I, in twenty-twenty, yeah, as a freshman, we expressed concerns in September and no answers to us either. And we're still fighting, but our problem is the adults in our building weren't willing to fight at the moment and now we're scrambling when it seems like it's too late. So I understand and I, we're trying, so we're not going to stop trying because the school is truly something amazing and when you're a family, you know, you don't want to see your family suffer, but it's hard right now and I appreciate you guys for coming. I know how hard it is to talk about these things as well. So without further ado, I'm gonna talk about some things that our Inner High has talked about today. Ms. Beltman Cotton was with us as well and she's amazing. She gives us all the help we need and is very sure that all our concerns are addressed. The most important things that we talked about today were our alternatives to suspensions. We're super, we're super concerned with suspension rates as well. We do feel like a lot of it can be avoided, maybe. We are looking for a peer jury to implement into our schools and we're going to pilot that really soon, so we're really excited. DaVinci was discussing today what students we think will be unbiased enough to be on this peer jury and so we're really excited and that's coming soon and I have a feeling that it'll help all of our schools tremendously. We also talked about wellness efforts in the classroom. We like to make sure that all our students are feeling safe and feeling heard and attended to and cared for and that they have everything that they need. I think that all our staff members, while not perfect, they're definitely doing the best that they can and we appreciate them for it. Before this meeting too, that we would love to get all our BPS schools in, February, if you don't know, is Domestic Violence Month as well as numerous other things. And me and Grayden, the vice president of Inner High, got the chance to go to Domestic Violence Summit and we got to hear this amazing story from this amazing woman. But unfortunately, we, just me and Grayden, were the only two BPS students that attended. And of course, that raises questions as to, well, why aren't other BPS schools there? Because I can just, I-Prep and Lafayette are really, 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 really big on domestic violence awareness, really big on support and I just know that they would jump at the chance to be a part of this. But we just haven't taken the initiative, they've reached out to us numerous times and unfortunately, for whatever the case may be, we just haven't been able to connect. So now for February twenty-twenty-four, we're hoping that planning for this summit will not fall through this time and BPS will be in attendance. So we're super excited about that. We do have them coming, however, to our Inner High meeting and the wonderful woman who shared her story with us will be talking to the kids and I'm hoping that this will get some more hands-on experience with them. We're also hoping to bring more Inner High kids to the Board of Education meetings. We have so many amazing students that have so many things to say, but it's just the matter of getting them to say the things or comfortable enough to come here and speak on it. But I'm a student too and I'm here and so I'll, we'll do the best that we can to get everything in motion. So thank you guys so much for coming out tonight, we really appreciate it.
Okay, so I will now address some of the concerns that I heard this evening. And the common thread that will be weaved into just about all of my responses is that it is an us and not a you versus I situation. And so everything that I heard tonight, you know, it's complex. And I wish I could give a quick magical answer that would satisfy some of the concerns that I heard, but they are complex issues and it is going to take all of us. It's going to take, you know, business leaders, it's going to take parents, it's going to take students. It's going to take all of us to solve some of the concerns that I heard. So I'll start with Quinn Carroll. And certainly, it will always be, as the superintendent of schools, my desire to align whatever we're doing with what the New York State Education Department says should happen, with what our board passed Code of Conduct says must happen with regard to suspensions. And in our Code of Conduct, it talks about progressive discipline. That's what we use, progressive discipline. I'm on record over and over and over saying that we do not want to suspend children. You know, we've increased restorative practices, trauma-informed care training. We have SST teams in all of our schools. We're increasing the partnerships that we have. You know, we're working with the parent congress. So we're doing a lot of things, so you know, when I hear the question, what are you going to do? I say, what are we, what are we going to do? It's going to take all of us. Our children are coming out of a pandemic and some of the behaviors that we're seeing are very significant. I'm a huge proponent of being more proactive than reactive, which is why we, you know, are implementing the trainings and all of those things. If you have some ideas, call me. I'd like to talk to you because it's going to take all of us, not just me, but it's going to take all of us. And certainly, I've shared over and over that my table has open seats. I am willing to link arms and build a bridge so that we can all work together for the betterment of our children. Mr. Bruno, always good to hear from you, you know, you're consistent in your message. And you know, I hear, you know, on the one hand, we're talking about alternative to suspensions and on the other hand, I'm hearing that you're seeing some very significant things that are happening at your school, probably from a small number of students. And so, you know, most of the students that come there probably are not engaging in some of the behavioral things that you're seeing, but there is a small group of students that you're seeing recidivism over and over and over and that are being suspended and returned. You mentioned something tonight that caught my attention, a state-of-the-art school of support. I just like the title, I like what that says because for a long time in our district, we've had what we call alternative high school, one-thirty-one school, all of, you know, which doesn't sound very positive, you know. And so we do right now have a committee that has been, or is being established and we have associate Charlene Watson and we have chief Jezzynowski, Darlene Jezzynowski. And they are working right now on creating something like a state-of-the-art school of support for children that need more than what a traditional high school can offer them. Whether it is counseling, whether it is CTE programming, whether it is sports, we want to be able to offer the children what they need to be successful. So we are working on that. Again, I wish I had a quick fix and I could say that tomorrow, you know, we can open a school like that. But it's going to take a little time, so I just ask for a little patience with that. And I will be responding, I did see your email and I will be responding. Mrs. Evans, I believe Dr. Brown has already made connection with Ms. Evans and you can update me tomorrow on how we can support some of the things that she shared about her daughter or her granddaughter that she's experiencing. Uh, Ms. Brady, is Allison your daughter?
Yes.
Okay, what a, what a leader you have and you should feel proud, you know? You should, you should. Um, because I think nothing gets our attention quite like a student's voice. And, um, certainly, we heard tonight, you know, the concerns that you shared about, um, not knowing where, uh, your school will be located in September. What I can share is that we don't want to just give out smoke and mirrors for the sake of smoke and mirrors. And so when we say that, you know, we're prioritizing it and we're working on it, please believe that we really, really are. And, you know, I speak with Chief Hills, we've talked about it, um, and it is my intention that we will have a location that is comfortable for the students, comfortable for parents, and as soon, as soon as we have something solidified. But we don't want to give two and three and come back and then say it's this and not that because that's not fair. That's not fair to you and it just creates more angst and anxiety. But please know that it is certainly something that is on our priority list. We, it keeps us up at night. We want to make sure, you know, DaVinci is a blue-ribbon school, you know? It's a school that had 100% graduation rate, which we intend to continue. We want to keep that trend going. So we will be, I believe there's another meeting that's scheduled March 7th. Associate Perez, is that right? Okay, March 7th, we have a meeting, um, to come and, you know, it was very important to me to be a part of the meeting that's coming, um, on March 7th. So I'll be there and I do hope that we have something solidified that we can share. But, you know, if we don't, I will be honest, I will always be honest and let you know that, you know, we're not at a place where we can, but I do hope that we have something that we can share with you on March 7th. Mr. Lang, always good to hear from you. Always good to hear from you. You know, you are a tireless advocate for Bennett, no question about it. Um, you know, again, it's one of those situations, I'm talking with Mr. Hills, I talk with Dr. Karestas. It is our intention, we do believe that we are at a place, we're at a tipping point at that location on Main Street. We know that. And so, you know, it is our intention to be fair to the Lewis J. Bennett School as well as to the Middle Early College School. You know, each school has its own culture, we know that. So when you put two cultures in one place, it can sometimes create a little bit of difficulty. And so we do want to have each of those schools in their own location. I hear 92% graduation. I mean, we want to continue and and take that trajectory in the right direction. So, you know, we know that it's about time for our letters, for our eighth graders who are anxiously awaiting to hear where they're going to high school and if it is such that we can increase by 100 or 200 by September, we want to do that. And we want to let families know as soon as we can if that's what the plan is and if that's what's gonna happen. So as far as the communication breaking down, um, I wasn't aware of communication breaking down. I want us to continue working together. I want us to continue working together, so we'll continue with that. Um, Matthew, Matthew, what a student leader. I mean, you mentioned so many things that you were involved in, I kind of lost count. Student Council and Inner High and SBMT and, you know, a bunch of things. And, um, kudos to you. And you started off by sharing that your school needs proper funding. No argument there, no argument at all. But then you kind of began to talk about safety and that is one of my major priorities. Great instruction and increased safety. So when I hear, again, nothing gets my attention quite like when I hear from students that are living it every single day in these schools, I hear your concerns. And so just know that we will be doing everything that we can so that Middle Early and Bennett, Lewis J. Bennett can have their own respective campuses and grow and thrive individually. That's what we want. Um, Ms. Hussein Khadijah, it was my pleasure to be present on that Saturday morning. It was early, I had my jeans on and we had a good time. We had a really good time. I mean, you all provided breakfast, that was awesome. We were in a great location, um, over at Deuville. And, you know, I just want to say that it is never my intention for any of our students to ever feel any kind of retaliation when they come before this board, um, and they share their lived experiences. We want students to do that. We have to help train them to be able to do that. And, you know, I think Student Voice has the ability to change policy, you know? When done right, it can change policy. And so I want to also thank you for the love and appreciation that you extended because it's easy sometimes to, you know, point that finger and say what's wrong and, you know, I appreciate that tonight you took the time to thank many, many people that are working very, very hard in the district and just to show that you recognize that the work is hard and you appreciate that. Thank you for that. President Spidel, um, passionate tonight, you know, very, very passionate, um, heard some frustration. What I do want to share though about, you know, board members is that, you know, um, they're working for a whole city of children and, um, you know, especially our at-large who who really represent the 31,000 kids that we have in the district. And I will share with you that Dr. Rivera, she's working hard, you know, she put together a plan. I, I don't even know, you know, how she did it all, but she, she put together a plan for us to specifically begin addressing the needs of students with disabilities. And we are going to do that. We, we sat, we talked about it, she has shared what her vision is on it. And we are going to be working together, um, to make sure that we're doing exactly what that plan lays out, which is really like a best practice, you know? It's something that we probably could have or should have been doing, but now that we have the roadmap for how we can help some of that to happen, we will. And, you know, I do want to thank you because, um, you know, in a short period of time, you've kind of become the voice, you know, parents somehow navigate and get to you and let you know when things are, um, you know, are not happening the way that they would like for them to happen. And I think, you know, with that, it's a lot of responsibility. But when I hear you, you know, you mentioned one or you mentioned two and you continue to navigate a path to get the help for that one or two parents and that makes a difference because until all of the children in our district are serviced the way that they should, you know, then we're not there, we're not there. So I really do appreciate, I always have, you know, your honesty, your candor, but just, you know, know that the board members, they're working hard. I know that because, you know, they're working me hard. So I know that. So I just want to, you know, just, just say, it's gonna be us, we're gonna work together and, um, you know, we're gonna little by little get to where we need to get to. And Executive Director, um, Bauer Walker, thank you very much for sharing the love and appreciation again. The Circle Group, I thought it was very well organized, the students were well-spoken. Um, you know, you had a very diverse group of young people who are leaders, who were really leaders, who opened up and were very honest that day. I think we all were and certainly I left feeling, um, much, much lighter than when I, I didn't know when I walked in what I would be walking into, but, you know, they were very articulate, very welcoming and they just shared what their truths were and I appreciated that and I'm looking forward to coming back. And, you know, again, thank you also for sharing, um, you know, the love and appreciation. And, you know, you continue to let them know that Student Voice has the ability to change policy and, um, you know, but we just want to make sure that it's, it's always us and we don't get into you versus, you know, I or any of that. It's gonna take all of us to work together to make things better in our district. So with that being said, I will turn things back over to President Kotman. Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone on the board who wants to, uh, comment or say anything in regards to, uh, the speakers or the superintendent? Okay, at this point, thank you. If not, may I have a motion to approve the, the minutes from the meetings of December the 21st of 2022, January the 3rd, and January the 18th of 2023? I see Paul, it was in second by, uh, Mr. Larry Scott, Board Member Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And moving forward, we will now address our consent agenda. We have a couple of, uh, items that have comments. Uh, we will start with number 13A, Mr. Terrence Hurd, assign, I'm sorry.
Yeah, before you begin, Ms. Kotman, I just want the board to know you'll see 16B on your exceptional checklist, it's not in Board Docs, but that item has been pulled, I just want to note that for the public record. So you do 16B in Board Docs, it's 16C as you see in the paper. And also to let you know that the board resolutions, which are on the checklist, 26 on down, those will be handled separately after you vote on the consent agenda. So you won't be voting on those as part of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Um, okay, um, admire. Thank you, I'm sorry about that, thank you, appreciate that. Item number 13A, are you able to bring it up in Board, Board Docs, put it on the screen? No?
Yeah.
Okay, we need to work on that so that item can come up. It is the assignment of BPS bed codes, Buffalo Board of Ed Education, number 48, 50, 90, 196, and 197. Mr. Hurd?
Uh, yes, thank you. I had a parent call me that, um, was, had some concerns about the movement of children within these facilities or movement of, with the bed codes. Uh, can you just please explain it, uh, what this, the purpose is and why it's necessary that we, um, take the stance?
Sure, so first off, no children will be moved. So all children will stay in the locations they, they are. Uh, so in a nutshell, what we're doing is we are doing the paperwork to cover the plans that we already had in place. So a couple of things, we already knew that we needed to phase the junior high out of 197, we were doing that anyways. Right now, there's only a 7th and 8th grade in the school that we call 196. So what we're now doing is the 8th graders are gonna matriculate, matriculate onto high school. The kids that are 7th graders there now, they will become 8th graders still in the same building, but under the beds code that covers school 48. That's it. And then that will also make it so that school 197 is just 9 through 12. We've been doing, we've been in the process of doing that anyways. This is just the paperwork to cover that. And then also essentially with 59, um, and the school we refer to as 59A, they're under one beds code. The state doesn't allow that, so that's covered under Commissioner Regs. Let me take my glasses off. 121C, um, since they're two physically different standing buildings, each building needs a beds code. So we're just going back to 59, Drew Magnet, grades 3 through 8. Uh, the school community expressed they would like it to be called School 90 again. We're gonna call it School 90 again over there on A Street, but in that situation, no kids are moving. We're just doing the physical separation per the beds code so that they each can have their own beds code. So no kids are moving, it's a wash.
Okay, those are the questions that, that came to me and, um, I was, I, I realized that it wasn't, you know, gonna be any children move, but it's a little confusing if you just look at this and glance at it to try to figure out, you know, what's actually happened. So thank you for that explanation and this does concern two schools, four schools, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
On paper, on paper.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Bullock.
So, um, before you leave, Mrs. Bullock, I just want to, uh, make sure that, um, and we had this conversation earlier today and, um, I guess it's not necessarily under your purview, but I guess it would be under the purview of maybe of the Superintendent and, uh, our Chief Academic Officer. That's a goal always, in my opinion, should be, that we are looking to create additional seats and spaces for our children. And that's necessary in order for us to, uh, have space to take back the children. So I would like in the future, a, uh, uh, either under educational support or probably under educational support, um, some sort of report that tells us how many seats are being created and what is available. Because it's one thing to just move kids or don't move kids, it's another thing, when you make movements, there should be additional seats formed. And I think this is important that our placement office has this information before they start placing people. So I think this is very important that we get this handled as quickly as possible. All right? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next, Mr. Hurd is 17G, All High Phase 3 Stadium Upgrades.
Give me one second to pull it up, please. I would like to, um, uh, thank you for the work that's, that's been completed, uh, with work to be in completion with All High Stadium. I know we work very hard as a district and our committee, the athletic committee met, um, over the past couple of years and made recommendations to All High and our desire for that to be, uh, um, a stadium that, that can, um, help serve, you know, the city of Buffalo, community here in the city of Buffalo and also have, um, Title IX and Section VI status for, uh, state competition. So we'd like to thank the work. Uh, some of the things that we requested to see was the design work, um, of the facility and, um, and then moving forward, so, uh, us and the community actually see the design have some type of, um, input in the design. I know throughout our meetings that, um, that those things are being placed, but, um, uh, community has asked a couple, uh, quite a few questions about what's going on with the stadium. We heard a speaker tonight also. Also, um, some of the things that we talked about was upgrades to the locker room and we were, if we're building visitor section onto the, um, onto the, onto the, um, stadium itself, uh, the updates to the locker room, making it larger and also having the area for the cheerleaders, showers, uh, and multiple restrooms for the players and, and also the attendees there at the stadium. So, um, if that design work, uh, can try to include some of those things, I don't know what, um, else our budget would, uh, have to be adjusted to, to make sure those are in place or if it's already in the budget that's here on the, um, on the document, um, 17G, just a, a quick update for the community so they can have an understanding.
So the change order for today is so that the design that was built into Phase 2 to prepare for Phase 3 can accommodate the additional scope of work to add in the items that have been raised. So it is more that we're asking in the, the design and we also had overages on Phase 3. So this is specifically, our Phase 2, this is specifically so we could do the design for Phase 3, um, with the consultants that we've worked with for Phase 1 and Phase 2. They will, in the process of design, be meeting with the community, produce a design and that design, basically that ends their work that they were contracted for and then that design will be used to RFP to build it. Now, there, there will be a dollar amount attached to that design and there's a dollar amount that's been allocated. We may get to a point where when we go through that design process, we say, these are all the things we want, this is how much we budgeted and we will either have to make choices to alter the design, to value it down, or to find an increased amount of money. Now, as Jim Barnes will share with you, we had anticipated that our bester would cover this, it does not. So we have to find the money in the general fund, there is currently an allocation, but we do not know if that's enough until we've actually done the design that, and we want to make sure, because this is the last chance we get. This is the last chance we have to make a state-of-the-art stadium on that property. So we want to make sure that we capture everything in that design and we don't get started and say, oh, we also wanted this.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hills, I, I know that, um, this is a very important, um, project here in the city of Buffalo, but it means more, you know, to the people that played in that stadium who lives in the area and here lives in the city of Buffalo. So, you know, constantly, week after week, and getting calls about All High Stadium and what's being done. And, uh, also I'd like to see maybe, um, having some students or something, you know, at, at artwork or some type of design. And also, I'd like to see maybe having some students or something, you know, at artwork or some type of design characteristics to the program, whether it's Buffalo Public School students, or maybe University of Buffalo students. So it could be more cost-effective, you know, to do the project that way. And we can, you know, university work together, you know, with citizens here in Western New York to try to get that design done.
Thank you, I have a couple of questions. So what is the timeline for this? When would these specs be, or when would this be completed, please?
So the timeline hasn't started at the moment, we haven't done any design at the moment. What we're waiting for, for the board, is to actually approve this change order, so therefore we can actually implement all the scope of work that Mr. Hurd mentioned as part of the project. Originally, the scope of work really entailed just doing upgrades to the stadium, primarily dealing with separate entryways into the building, into the actual field itself. However, once we get this approval, we can actually start doing the design, and I suspect that we could submit a set of documents to the State Education Department, who will have to review and approve and issue a building permit for this project.
By what time?
November, this November.
So we're not talking about doing this for this year?
No, we're going to lose our window of opportunity.
Okay, so this is frustrating for me because, there's a couple of reasons, but I guess my concern here is that in reading this, this is not adable. And I've been told that there's a way to make this adable. Okay, so does the scope of work cover that as well? Is somebody from your area going to see if there's a possibility that we can make this adable? Because I'm being told that there's a way to make it adable.
There's a possibility that we can make this project adable. However, we are going to reach out to State Ed, as well as the Big Five, Jennifer Pyle, and see if we can actually tie this as part of Bennett High School. For those who don't know, All High Stadium is considered a separate structure, and since the structure doesn't actually have a true student population, therefore it does not generate any type of building aid.
I understand that, but I've also been told that it's a matter of putting up two walls, or connecting All High to Bennett, and it becomes adable, and so that's my reason for asking that question. And I guess what I've seen today, and it's no reflection on you, but it is on the previous administrator, administration, from the perspective that so many projects just did not move forward as they should have. And for me, in this particular case, I find it hard to understand how we can plan to put new turf down, talk about doing things, and then don't put it in place. So we're talking about not getting our scoreboards up this year, is that what we're talking about? Okay, we're talking about not getting our All High, and that's not what my expectations were. So for me, I'm a little disappointed about that. Meanwhile, back at The Ranch, has the work, the necessary paperwork been prepared so that State Ed, generally, the paperwork that they asked us for last, we talked about last April, has that work been prepared and completed? Those reports, at this point? Because the last time we had a meeting, my understanding was that February, this would be being wrapped up.
We are getting the building condition survey at the end of the month, and based on that, we are doing the long-range capital projects based off the building condition.
Okay, so for me, what I need is, Madam Superintendent, I think the board would like to know the timeline. We're approving this today, we want an idea of how long it will take these people to come up with this plan, or this scope of work, and is it possible that it can be done within 30 days? Is it possible 60 days? Whatever, we need deadlines, this is something that drives me bananas, because I'm coming from an area where we have to have deadlines. And so I need to know when this work is going to be done, and what concerns me is, is that if it's not done, it's not going to happen this year. Granted, I can already feel that, because if it was going to happen this year, this would have been pushed back in September, which is when the concerns started coming in to me, that we weren't going to meet the deadline to start this year. So I would just like a deadline put in place, I don't want people receiving close to $300,000, taking their time about getting it done. I don't think that's too much for the board to ask for a definite timeline. So reach out to your people, come back to us with a reasonable deadline, and if they can't do it within a reasonable time, maybe we need to look at sending this bid out, since we're not going to make it happen this year, and having somebody else who may be able to do it in a timely manner. This is where we are right now. Okay, time is of the essence, we want our facility done, and we want it done yesterday. So just so you know, okay, that's how I feel, and I think the board would support me on that.
And thank you, President Cottrell, we are committed to updating on every substantial piece we have, either through committee or at board meetings, because I think we have, the lack of transparency hasn't been in anyone's interest.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yes, Mr. Hurd?
My question is, one more question, the RFP process, how long would it take, you think, that we can get something out, to bid out for RFP process, just say, if it was just a scoreboard, or say if it was just the seating area? I don't know if we're going to do it in divisions or different sections for each piece, or one company going to be able to assume the whole project?
And then you fix whatever I say wrong, okay? So, once we do the design, we'll know what we want to build, and then we will need to look at, there would be a possibility of Phase 3, Phase 4, maybe putting this phased in, but I think it's in the best interest of all involved to get this right, get it done, put a bow on it, again, because we're not going to come back on this. And every time we re-phase it, we run the risk of being worse positioned in the future. So we will know much better when we have the design done. Now fix whatever I said wrong.
Before you go, are we looking for one company to sustain the whole project, or are we looking for several different phases to come in place, what direction are we going in right now?
So basically, what we're bidding out is actual contracting work. We actually procure the actual design services. So the actual project itself is going to be bidding out the project itself to have different contractors. You're going to have site contractors, general contractors, you're going to have electricians, plumbers, and so forth, who are actually going to bid on this project.
So I want to be clear, based on what you bring us back, the board will may have to make a decision that we have to start a process afresh. Since we're not going to have this happen this year, we want to make sure that we get the persons who are people in there that are going to do it. So you can let this vendor know that the board feels that time is of the essence, and it is to their advantage to get it done as quickly as possible. And that's being fair, to give them a heads up. Because at this point, since it's not going to happen this year, I have no problem putting this back out to bid.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hurd, any other questions on this? Okay, Mr. Hurd, 18E?
Yes, I just had a concern, I was looking at 18E.
What's your textbooks, I'm sorry, new French textbooks?
Yes, and of course, I believe that we need to adore in our languages, and have access, you know, for our children to cultivate, learn different languages. But I was looking at the prices, $203,528 for five years' worth of textbooks, I think that's a little extensive. And I just had a couple of questions about how many schools will be served by this, and how many books are they actually getting? And how many do we need for education in French, when we got so many online tools that we use right now?
I'll double check, but I believe this does include the online components of the program, so it's, we always say textbook, but it's often a hardcover book and licenses, which I believe is in this board item. So the licenses include all the online components, so kids would have access to the online materials. So it's every school that offers French, I apologize, I don't have an account in my head, but many of our schools do offer French, sometimes French and Spanish, but sometimes just French. So we'd be replacing all of their textbooks, which are, I think, about 10 years old.
How many facilities are we speaking of?
Again, I don't know off the top of my head, any school that offers French.
So we don't know how many schools offer French?
Off the top of my head, no, I don't, I don't know.
And Chief Battitelli, is it such that there's French 1, French 2, French 3, maybe IB French? There may be, you know. So one school could have multiple French classes?
So it could be at middle school, right, because they could be offering a world language in French, and it could obviously also be high school. So there's multiple buildings involved in the purchase. So that license, if I'm correct, that cost is actually spread over five years, so we're paying now, but we get a five-year license.
Yeah, that equals to about $41,000 a year.
Which is actually, I think, the cheapest bid that we received. It was the number, I believe it was the cheapest, as well as the number one rated by the committee. I can definitely take a step back and verify that for you, but.
Okay, thank you, I was just, I had a concern about the price and actually what the coursework that'll be given to the students.
Yeah, so if you think about it over the course of five years, it's not as expensive as it sounds upfront.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Ann Battitelli. Next, we have Mr. Hurd, number 19I.
Yes, that's the teachers residency program, I just wanted to say to Dr. Will Caressi, Superintendent, that you're doing a wonderful job with this, you know, I know a couple of people that went into the program and came through, and I'd just like to thank you for the work that you guys are doing in trying to cultivate teachers here in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. I have Board Member Scott for 21A, payment to attorney per settlement agreement, Mr. Scott, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Cottrell. Just a brief comment on this one, I've commented on these settlements before. This is again another student from a charter school, Charter School for Applied Technologies, that we, as a district, are held responsible for the liability and for the cost of the settlement. And this pertains to a student that's at a charter school, who has an IP with a disability, and had some disciplinary issues that resulted in suspension. And because of the way the regulations read, it falls on the district when we, from my interpretation of this, and in talking with our general counsel, Mr. Kuzma, are not directly responsible for the actual complaint, the initial complaint that was made.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, and you know, as I've, you know, talked to the board about roughly, you know, we get about 20 of these sort of due process complaints a year, and half or more are related to charter school matters. And as the LEA, Local Educational Agency, we are responsible for handling them. I am going to be speaking this Friday with Representative from the Big Five on this issue, and hope that we can get some advocacy behind it, because it really should, you know, there should be a way to hold these charter schools accountable, you know, from a financial perspective, because we get stuck with the bill. So I appreciate your comment in that regard, and it's noted, and I'm working on it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, for bringing that to the board's and the public's attention, appreciate that. Let's see. I have a comment or a concern about the Section 6 dues, it is item board number 23A is the item. In August, we deferred payment contingent upon the thoughts that we would not necessarily receive the proper representation from Section 6. Subsequently, because we have received services from them, we are moving this item forward to pay them, but I have major concerns for paying an agency that does not represent urban school children properly in this city, or in this area, actually, I have concerns. So because we currently have a lawsuit with Section, against Section 6, or a complaint, I should say, with the Division of Human Rights in regards to how our children were treated under the situation with the football, situation where our games were, our wins were taken away from us. I think if you have not had the opportunity to read it, it is very good reading, it is very interesting, and I'm very proud to say that under that HR, Human Rights complaint, that our staff did an excellent job in presenting that. And so although we are moving this forward, because we want to show that we are good neighbors, and that we are responsible, a responsible board that has acknowledged that we have received a bill, I will be voting in the affirmative for this, but it will be under protest, and that is item number 23A. Mr. Kuzma, do you have anything you need to say at that point?
No, as you know, board, we have two pending actions, you know, regarding Section 6 with the 310 appeal to the commissioner, as well as a New York State Division of Human Rights complaint, which you have. You know, we're going to be pursuing those, and I do encourage you to pass tonight's item, and I do also encourage you to do so with reservation and under protest.
Can you explain what the 310 appeal is, please, and for those who don't know?
Yeah, the 310 appeal is, is an appeal to the commissioner challenging the determination that was made, the egregious determination that was made this past fall, after it was very late in the season, you know, quote unquote, discovered that we had an 8th grader, or a 9th grader that played 8th grade in another district the year before, and, you know, very draconian, unnecessary penalty was imposed, where, you know, Bennett had to forfeit four games, a coach was suspended for a game, and those decisions were made, you know, without really ever conducting an investigation or seeking feedback from our district. So, yeah, so we're going to, we're pursuing that to the fullest, and we'll see where it goes.
Can I just ask you a question, because it's out there, it's public? One of the things that I read was that this young man did not come directly from sweet homes, he came from a Catholic school. He had been enrolled in one, had been completely enrolled in one. And so from what I read, it was interesting that this even happened to Buffalo, to Bennett, at that point, because it certainly did not meet the criteria from my perspective, but then I'm not an attorney, I'm just a layman who likes to read stuff, you know what I mean?
Well, you know, I think this issue is one of many, you know, it's been a thousand cuts for our community and for our athletic programming, and, you know, this particular case was, yeah, the student didn't come right from Sweet Home, had enrolled in Canisius High School, and of course then came and enrolled in Bennett. We had no knowledge of where the student was previously. Like I said, this is a systemic problem across the state, you know, with all 11 sections, including Section 6, and we're looking for significant, meaningful change, you know, through our actions.
Thank you so much. The other thing deals with number 23B for me, it is the SUNY Erie Tuition Smart Scholars, and it deals with the correction of the dates, but what I want to bring to the board's attention is that recently, I have been told that many of the staff that was working with our middle, early college students have been, are no longer with the Erie Community College, and I would like in the near future, for our under educational support, for us to have a conversation about what that looks like. I'm not sure, but I am concerned, because it was brought to me, my attention, that two, not one, but two of the staff members are no longer there, and that they were looking for people to fill that job. So I don't think that's anything our staff would know, but it was brought to me by someone over the weekend who is affiliated with the college. So I do plan next week, during our off week, to meet with the president, or the interim president of Erie Community College, and I will be talking about that issue, but I want us to be aware of what has been brought to my attention. With that, without further ado, if there are no other items, may we, and may we take a vote in regards to the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Kuzma.
You're welcome, President Cottrell. How do you vote on the consent agenda, Dr. Evans-Brown?
I'm going to say, yeah, I'm sorry. No exceptions, except 23A, under protest.
So you're voting yes, under protest?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Voting yes to the consent agenda with 23A, voting yes with reservation under protest.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Ms. McKeckin?
Yes, for the consent agenda, and as per my colleagues, the same thing, 23A, yes, but under protest. Yes, for the consent agenda, and as per my colleagues, the same thing, twenty-three A, yes, but under protest.
Ms. McCosey?
I also vote yes for the consent agenda, and also with my colleagues, twenty-three A, I vote with reservation under protest.
Thank you, Ms. McCosey. Dr. Rivera?
No exceptions, and for twenty-three A, I vote yes, under protest.
Ms. Shuda?
I vote yes for the consent agenda, except for twenty-three A with reservation, no.
Thank you, Mrs. Shuda. Mr. Scott?
No exceptions, twenty-three A with reservation.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Board Member Woods?
Yes, to the consent agenda, twenty-three A, with under protest with reservations.
And President Bellman?
No exceptions, under protest for twenty-three A.
Thank you. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you, Board Members.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kuzma. So this is the first, we've changed our agenda, and this is the first week that we will be doing things a little bit more differently. Our intent has, I'm sorry, am I missing something? The resolution, okay. So we have two resolutions, my bad. We have, are we gonna have Board Members read their resolutions? Teresa Shuda. Ms. Woods, your resolution is pretty long. Okay, so let's start with item number, what is it?
Twenty-six A.
Twenty-six A, okay, which is Board Resolution, Development of Partnership Between Buffalo Public Schools and Kids Escaping Drugs. Board Member Shuda, you have the floor.
Board Resolution, Development of a Partnership Between Buffalo Public Schools and Kids Escaping Drugs, Sponsored by Teresa Shuda, February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Whereas the Buffalo Board of Education is committed to addressing the issue of alcohol and drug use in adolescents and its effect on the family and the school community. And whereas Kids Escaping Drugs is able to assist the district with youth and adult programming, youth anti-vaping education, and with exploring alternatives to out-of-school suspensions for alcohol and drug use through interventions coordinated with their organization. And whereas a partnership with Kids Escaping Drug would would support implementation of the district's wellness policy and the district's health education curriculum. And whereas a partnership with Kids Escaping Drugs seeks to address the risk behaviors related to the drug and alcohol use as indicated in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey data, whereas these services come with no cost to the district, and therefore be it resolved that the superintendent and the district will engage with Kids Escaping Drugs to design and implement programming in our schools to educate and deter children's drug and alcohol use. And be it further resolved, the Board of Education requests a minimum of quarterly updates from the superintendent on Kids Escaping, on the Kids Escaping Drugs partnership.
Thank you. Board Members, you have heard the reading of this resolution. May I have a motion to accept? Is that right? Okay, I see two down there, so we're gonna take Board Member Woods, and we're gonna take Cindy as well. Thank you. All right, so this is, we need to open this up for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so does any Board Member have a comment on this or would like to talk? One of the things that I noticed that I would like to add a friendly amendment here to the second from the bottom paragraph, and I would like to add that we include parents in that line somewhere or another. Because when we look at their program, they're also, it says in here that the superintendent of district will engage in the Kids Escaping Drugs to design and implement programming in our schools to educate and deter children's drugs and education use. But they also have a, the ability to work with parents to educate parents. So I thought maybe if we just add Board Member Shuda something about.
About children and families.
How about children and families? Okay, and that'll work. That'll work. And so then we we make sure that we they, we realize that this is a, an opportunity. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share or talk about this program? Yes, Mr. Hurd?
I would just say for the presentation last Wednesday, it's a wonderful program. I truly support it. And anything that we can do to to help, you know, bring programs like this to the district, we should take a deeper dive into, because these are our children, our families, our our school buildings, you know, that we're concerned about and caring about. So thank you, Ms., Board Member Shuda, for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you. Board Member Shuda, would you accept other Board Members signing on to this? Okay, do we have any Board Members who would also like to be signed on to this? Okay, anyone who does not, I guess it should be the question.
All of us are in favor.
All of us are in favor. So the Board would like to also co-sponsor this with you, if you will allow us. Thank you. No further discussion? May I have a vote, Mr. Kuzma?
How do you vote on the resolution, Dr. Evans-Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Ms. McEcken?
Yes.
Ms. McCosey?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuda?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
And President Bellman?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mrs. Shuda, your first resolution unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Watch her out, watch her. Now there's no holding her back. Our second res, Board Resolution to be considered tonight is dance, is to the Dance Wing of the Buffalo Academy for Visual and Performing Arts to be named after the late Yvonne James Brown. Board Member Woods? May I? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Principal Jody Covington Covington has attached the letter saying simply that this year, the Buffalo Academy for Visual Performing Arts will be celebrating the legacy of the late Mrs. Yvonne James Brown during our annual Black History Program on February twenty-eighth. And as one of the founding faculty members of Buffalo Performing Arts, Miss James Brown played an integral part in the establishment of the artistic programming at the school and in the Buffalo region. And they just want to honor her for her professionalism and personal commitment to our school. And they've done a public meeting on February fourteenth. They had announcements in the in the paper, public meetings where notices were pasted in the Buffalo News, double, Channel Two aired a public meeting information during two broadcasts. The Buffalo Academy for Visual Performing Arts posted the information on their webpage. Alumni shared the information via social media. And the current retired teachers, alumni, and students compiled a petition and supported this. So I just, the reason for bringing this to the Board specifically is that we are just requesting a waiver of of the policy requiring a two-to-four week consideration for additional public hearing recommendations. The the, the actual resolution is very lengthy, so I'm not going to read it all. It basically says, whereas it is requested by the community of Buffalo Academy for Visual and Performing Arts, Buffalo Public School Number one ninety-two, to honor the late Yvonne James Brown by naming the Dance Suite of the Buffalo Academy for Visual Performing Arts to be named the Yvonne James Brown Dance Wing. There's a list of so many accomplishments that this woman has had. She is nationally recognized. She was a founding member of the faculty. She initiated performing and artistic programs for dance. I mean, she's just, she's put us on the map. And most of us who've been involved with the arts, I used to be in dance, respect and admire her. We just a couple other things on here in the reso. Miss Brown held a master's degree in education with a focus in curriculum and development. She was part of the Arts Academy faculty team, who authored the academy's New York State-approved dance curriculum. She, she's performed with the Karima Dance Company Ensemble, Gemini Dance Theater, was featured in the Catherine Durham Documentary Profiles in Greatness. She trained at the Harlem School of the Arts, the School of Movement Center for Positive Thoughts, Sunny Buffalo, the Catherine Durham Institute, and the Etna Manley Summer Institute. And she's got numerous awards. So the bottom line is, we're just asking to honor her. Jody Covington is asking us to please approve naming the school wing after her.
Thank you. May I have a motion? Mr. Scott? Oh, boy, everybody's doing that one, huh? Okay, ladies. I saw Larry's hand up first, and I didn't look this way. I mean, Jennifer's second. Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Could, can we ask that anyone else, what, from all the rest of the Board Members, like to be added to the sponsor?
Yeah, that's what was just brought to my attention. Okay, I'm sorry.
Was that why your hand was up, Cindy?
No, you're good, you're, you're.
So, Mrs. Woods, would you accept other, other Board Members co-sponsoring this resolution?
I would welcome everyone recognizing the treasure in our community.
Okay, anyone not interested? Okay, so be it now. I'm sorry. Now we can move forward. Yes, please, go forward.
Just a note from the, from the front, because, you know, we are bypassing some of the procedures laid out in Policy fifty-six thirty-one. It will require a two-thirds vote for passage. So, Dr. Evans-Brown, how do you, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Ms. McEcken?
Yes.
Ms. McCosey?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuda? Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Sir Timon.
Mrs. Bellman, President Bellman?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations. BAFTA has a new wing named after.
So I'm sorry, I sort of like took things out of place. I did the unfinished business. But I need, Dr. Revere, would you please?
Yes, I will. I just need to get my.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion to the Board to accept the suggested ad hoc and temporary committees. And I'll just pull up the names if you give me two seconds. I want to make sure they're absolutely correct. The Buffalo Board of Education Review Committee on Special Education, whose charge is to review the policies, procedures, and processes for students with disabilities in the areas of identification, assessment, placement, student conduct and behavior, and transition, as well as the Ad-Hoc Review Committee on Special Education, whose charge is to analyze the data associated with our students with disabilities and to review the policies, practices, and procedures and processes for students with disabilities in the areas of identification, assessment, placement, student conduct, and behavior, and transition.
Thank you, Board Member Revere. May I have a motion to accept? Oh, that, was that, okay, you make, you accept it, okay. I don't know what I'm doing. I'm tired. Wore me out today. Okay. Okay, so we have, who's second? Cindy.
We'll just go, yeah.
Cindy wants. Somebody needs to be sitting there so you can monitor who's doing that, because I can't see down there.
There are two.
Two. There's one ad hoc, and then there's one temporary.
To explain, there are two committees. The temporary committee is a committee through our Board Bylaws made up of Board Members, as well as the potential to have some parent Congress members. The ad hoc committee is a separate bylaw within the bylaws of the district, the operating procedures of the district and the bylaws of the Board of Education that's put together to work directly with student data. And we put it together that way so that there would be no delay in working with data, and there would also be protection for student privacy as they're looking through and reviewing various records. So there'd be no question with that.
I don't see an issue unless you as Board do with handling that together.
No, I don't see an issue.
Okay.
Okay. Everyone's clear? So I'd like to say that what we, what we have to do as a district and as a community is to, is to get past the past. We have a new day in our district, and the atmosphere and the environment is conducive and receptive to doing things in a different way. And we are fortunate as a Board to have our present leader, who is receptive to the things that the Board would like to do. That has not always been the case. And so we heard today many criticisms or concerns about the Board not moving in a certain way or whatever. But truth be told, if the Board does not know about it, what can we do about it? And if the administration is not transparent and receptive, then if we don't hear about it through the grapevine, we won't, we won't find out. But that is not the case anymore. Okay? And so what I'd like for us to do as a community and as our supporters, our friends and our families and our students and our parents, is to acknowledge that this is a new day, and we're doing things in a, in a new way. And let's move forward. You know, I have, I have concerns, because this is not an easy role to do as far as being a Board Member. But when you don't have someone who is receptive to doing things in a, right, in the right way.
Transparency and communication.
Transparency and communication, as added by our, our Board Member Woods. We, we end up with things like we end up. And so I can appreciate the frustration. But this particular, the intuition that went into putting this together came as a result of the frustration of trying to deal with an administration that was just not receptive to moving the, the, moving the notch in a certain way. And so I appreciate the work that will be done. I appreciate the efforts that have gone into this. And I support my Board Members, because it's not easy being green. But our superintendent lets us be green. If you don't know that song, look it up. Hermit the Frog sings it. Okay? But anyway, with that said, can we move forward and vote? Because we have our seconds or whatever. Thank you.
On the formation of the temporary and ad hoc committees outlined by Dr. Rivera, how do you vote, Dr. Evans-Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Ms. McEcken?
Yes.
Ms. McCosey?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuda?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Certainly.
And President Bellman?
Yes. Board Members, I want to apologize for skipping over the committee report. We don't have any other unfinished business to address right at this point. Okay, so moving forward, let's do our committee reports, and let's wrap things up. We're gonna start today with our, how about? We're going to start today, um, with our, how about two, uh, with our, uh? Executive affairs.
Okay, so the executive affairs session on February 1st, 2023. And it, and it probably was a good segue into, um, or from Ann's res- uh, resolution about, uh, the special education services provided to students with disabilities. As we know, they're vast and complex, including initial determinations, the counseling that goes into it, um, physical therapy, speech, et cetera. Historically, we know that brown and black children made up a large proportion of the special education population from learning disabilities, emotional, and intellectual disabilities. So as the superintendent mentioned earlier, we are so excited to acknowledge that our colleague, Dr. Ann Rivera, an at-large MORT member, who has been passionate and an avid pioneer in the area of special education, has developed a true roadmap to examine data, current special education in the Buffalo Public School District, which is a monumental task. And we, we are here to support her. She did a wonderful presentation during that, uh, session on the first. And, uh, part of what she mentioned earlier was to, it's a charge to examine the data and reports and processes related for the identification, assessment, placement, et cetera of these children. And then the second part is an ad hoc, which will, ad hoc committee, which will analyze data and review the policies, procedures, and processes related to identification, assessment, placement, discipline, and transition of these students. It's a monumental task. I don't remember it ever being done in this dist- district. And as our president mentioned, this is a new day. And so we are going to use all of our intellect, because we are intelligent, and, uh, you know, our experiences to make things happen in this district. Failure is not an option. Sometimes we get bogged down, we forget some assignments. But I don't call it failure, I just call it simply forgetting. So that's my committee report. I also attended the CPAC parent meeting. Ann and I last year, or the last few years, have always, um, decided who was going to attend the meetings. I attended January's meeting along with, uh, MORT member Woods. She was there as well. Ann did a robust, uh, presentation about some of the special ed activities. She did a beautiful job. Um, there was discussions about, um, behaviors of some of these special ed kids in these buildings. That's a concern we're going to address soon as well. And then lastly, um, I did attend, along with Board President Cotman and Superintendent Tanya Williams, uh, the memorial of the five children that were, that perished in the fire on December 31st, um, '22. The principal, Natasha Hendricks, uh, put together a wonderful, um, memorial, and we did a balloon release that day. Beautiful colors, too. Thank you.
So I'd just like, um, and you stayed within three minutes. So I'd just like to remind board members that we are trying to stay within a three-minute limit on our presentations. You can, if you have, uh, multiple ones. I'm going to just move the mic on down the table and let people speak, and then we'll come back to this end, okay? And hopefully we'll.
I will, uh, give a brief, uh, report on our educational support committee. I think it would be redundant for me, uh, to repeat what was in our resolution. We, uh, are excited that we met with kids escaping drugs. And, uh, Dr. Brown and Dr. Williams, we want to thank you for letting, um, them have the opportunity to meet. They said they've been trying for nearly 20 years to establish an apart, a partnership with the Buffalo schools. And we know, um, uh, schools are at the elementary level, as well as the high school, are trying to find some answers to the vaping situation and the, um, the drug abuse and alcohol abuse. We want to help families, we want to help kids. So, uh, that's a summary of what our committee did. And I want to thank my colleagues. It was a great meeting. We had a lot of feedback, and, uh, we look forward to the partnership and moving forward.
Thank you. So in the interest of time and having the discussion around making sure committee reports aren't, uh, super long, uh, board members, I had sent you my committee report, um, and it's detailed. And I'm going to send it out to the public because folks need to know what we're doing. It's why we take this time. The two things I did want to speak on, one of them was being a part of that Lorna C. Hill speaking competition. I was a judge for Lafayette. And then obviously, the winner of Lafayette Echo was one of the finalists. I sent all the board members video clips of all of the finalists. Sorry, they're multiple, but I, I don't know technology. And I do want to uplift, um, the Teen Summit, the Domestic Violence Summit, that our student board member spoke of. I attended that summit, but I didn't attend it as a board member. I attended it as a board member of, uh, Center for Hope, which deals with narcissistic abuse, and it would tied into what we were doing. So I was very, I was shocked, it was my first time there. And to know that the Buffalo schools have not in previous years, uh, attended and have been asked in, I guess they're talking four to five years now. There were school, I mean, Sweet Home, Mount St., Mount St. Mercy, or Mount St. Mary, just all these different schools were there. And Buffalo, being as big as we are, we had two representation, uh, two represent, you know, two people from Da Vinci who showed. And, you know, I, I became the board member and put that hat on and worked with them. And they're really trying to push other schools, not only in inner high, but I believe that as the adults in the room, it's a dark, it's dark subjects, but it's real. And our students need to be aware of red flags when it comes to relationship violence and what they might see just in their own households, and how they can talk to people and talk through these things. So I just hope that we, this was held at the History Museum. And next year, um, with, uh, you know, Lucy, because Graydon will be graduating, uh, that Lucy helps lead that we can't fit in the History Museum in the space they gave us because Buffalo will show up. We need to make sure our students are protected. So I'm going to leave that at that, and please check out the committee reports that I sent over.
Member Hurd?
Yes, thank you. Um, I've visited quite a few schools and took a slew of phone calls from parents concerned citizens. And, um, and, um, I'm going to start posting those things on, on social media, all the things that we're doing, you know, here in the district, so that everybody get it, get it understanding, you know, all the, the body of work that we're doing here in the district. Um, I just want to take this time to reflect on May 14th. It was, uh, nine months ago and one day that we were in this building after the shootings down the street on Jefferson, four blocks away at the Tops Market. On that day, I heard the gunshots and, um, heard a couple of gunshots. And then I heard a couple of ones that was muffled because the shooter went inside the building. And, um, I had a neighbor come up to me and banged on my door and said that there were, um, shootings over at, at the Tops Market. And, um, we, um, he, in this neighborhood, you know, it was, it was common to hear gunshots, you know, not all the time in the, in the middle of the day, but, uh, we heard gunshots. And, um, nobody ran, nobody hid, nobody ducked for cover or anything like that because, you know, these people are immune to it. And, um, then another neighbor went outside. Another neighbor came and showed me some video that, uh, pictures that he took coming out of Tops. And he, and he was in the frantic, shaking, sweaty. And, um, I just remembered to reflect on today because in the exact same room, this is where, uh, I was at along with Dr. Tanya Williams. The Italian old principal here, that, 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 um, retired. Uh, Lee Fred Weststaff is here, um, consoling the, the, the families of the victims and learning about their loved ones and their whereabouts, where they at, because some people got moved from Tops, some was able to get away and run away. But, um, but today, I still refuse to say his name, but, um, he received life imprisonment without parole on, on 10 accounts. And I believe three accounts was, um, um, first degree murder with 25 to five years. And we talk about justice, and we talk about, you know, the ways of justice and what we need to do. And I just think as a district, you know, because these, this violent terrorist act affect all of us, all of our families, all of the children. And we expect for our children to come back to school, get good grades, sit in classrooms without nervous or, or trauma, and for its care, you know, um, going through all these different dilemmas in their minds, and, and teachers also, and the community, the parents. So, uh, just, just looking to take a deeper dive into mental health, um, about domestic violence and terrorism, and, um, having safe, safe plans for these districts, for these children, for these families. You know, what can we do? It can happen here, if it happened here, it can happen anywhere. This is a place that we're protected, and, um, these streets haven't came far since then because they're still extroverted. We had several incidents yesterday with our students. Young, young, young people, young people, young people. And, um, we have to do all we can to protect them. I know I have, um, three minutes, apologize, but, uh, just thank you, everyone, you know, that came to help support, and, uh, we know this is being entrenched in our, in our minds and hearts and our lives forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Moving forward, uh, Mr. Board Member Scott?
So for our Student Achievement Committee, last week, we, um, had Say Yes staff present on their summer, summer camps. Um, we are back up, they are back up to their numbers from pre-pandemic. And, which is 1,423 students. Um, we, they had 20 sites that were seven-hour, seven sites that were four-hour. Most notable for us was the, the gains that were made in the social, emotional area. We know the pandemic impacted our students in that area significantly. And so that was promising to see. And just satisf- satisfaction surveys from parents and from staff and students also were very positive. Uh, so we look forward to continuing that partnership with Say Yes Buffalo and their summer camps this summer. Additionally, I did attend the Literacy Hub launch here with the Sabers. And just want to really recognize this building, um, the staff, from the principal to the teachers to the aides and the students, they were phenomenal. I just, I really enjoyed the time that I spent here. The Sabers were great with these kids. And just a, a highlight that I have to share, it was, I was in a, a room with Dylan Cousins and Jack Quinn, and some of the students asked them math problems, to solve math problems on fractions and square roots. It got, it got a good laugh. Um, and then lastly, I attended, um, a panel discussion on gun violence. Um, if you remember, board members that were here at the time, in, uh, 2021, we passed a resolution on gun violence. And one of the things in that resolution was to restart panel discussions in our schools with our students on gun violence. And this was, I was told, the first one that was held this year. Principal Maria Conrad of Pathways welcomed and organized this necessary discussion that's hosted by Erie County District Attorney's Office. One of the panelists who was here tonight was, uh, Zaneta Everhart. And just another panelist that I want to recognize, Rashawn Smalls, who I thought was just very, very impactful in some of the words that he shared. And you could tell it really resonated with the students. Um, I left there feeling like our students need far more targeted discussions on this. Um, they need to be heard and supported. And Dr. Brown, if there's any way you can really encourage other building principals to host these panel discussions and have follow-up discussions with targeted groups, they're absolutely necessary. We know that gun violence can, continues to be problematic in our, in our city of Buffalo. So any way we can facilitate these discussions, these important discussions with our students, I highly encourage it. Um, just for our next Student Achievement, uh, meeting, we're going to have a, uh, co, an aligned meeting with educational support and hoping to have a presentation, an update on Diddle's results, as well as hopefully getting an update on some, uh, attendance data and suspension data.
Thank you, Board Member Scott. Board Member Woods?
Well, it's budget time, everybody knows that. Money runs everything. At a finance committee meeting, our CFO gave us an update on our, our ESER monies, both grants. And, um, the significant thing about that is we're spending it, we're spending it wisely. And our superintendent is reaching out to our community. They have a RSVQ that has been going out to invite the community members to address some of the trauma and learning loss and partner with us to love on our children and make a difference for our children. And the good news is that they're going to make that a continuing, continual request and monthly review, part, people who want to work with our schools to help our kids. I'm so proud of our superintendent for, for that effort. The budget process is moving, meetings are going on. School, uh, uh, the policy directives have been sent out. The school-based meetings are, are moving forward, uh, under your immense leadership. He gave a report on our quarterly, uh, finances, which, uh, we're doing well. And then a report was given on payroll activities, so everyone can address those problems with those little, uh, things they haven't gotten paid for extra hours and things like that. So finance was an excellent committee report. Thank you, Mr. Burns. For myself, we've been having capital budget meetings with, um, our board president, our ASL, David Hill. Uh, we're doing critical work on that. We're planning a new future for this school district to own, uh, own buildings, to address the space needs for our students, and to recapture our students from the charter schools. And I thank our superintendent for forming that committee and supporting us in those efforts. I attended a, um, a PTA book distribution, uh, over at East Olive and Greider. It was wonderful. We had some significant authors, one of which is the superintendent's daughter, I believe. They gave out, uh, the parents were just really excited to receive books, uh, ethically diverse books to encourage their children. And they gave out stuffed animals, all kind of great stuff. My kids loved it. I also went to Shades Buffalo. There is a movie that was presented on the two wars. And it's recognizing the efforts of veterans and the leadership of veterans in fighting hatred abroad while they were serving in a segregated army. My father starred in it, I was also in it. And, oh, many people from Naval Park produced it, and they're asking us to use it in our curriculum to educate our students. And I thank the staff, Fatima, Dr. Morell. She is interested in that, and I will be marching with my unit tomorrow at an event she's having in a urban. She is interested in that. And I will be marching with my unit tomorrow at an event she's having in Urban Forum. She's going to present some of that. So there's exciting things, exciting things happening. The movie was previewed, previewed at Shades Buffalo, so that was wild. Okay, that's enough. I think my three minutes is up.
Amen.
The only update I have is, was covered really wonderfully by Dr. Evans Brown, and I appreciate that. I just want to say I appreciate my colleagues on board, as well as our district partners in their support for these committees. And I look forward to doing great work with them on behalf of our students with disabilities.
Thank you all for staying awake through all of that. I just want you all to know, I very much appreciate that. And I am not going to list out all of the things that I have done, many of which you heard from other people. So thank you. That's all I have.
I'd like to give, I'd like to give a shout out to Cindy because she has taken the time to go into her schools. And they were very appreciative to see her. It's, it's not an anomaly for a board member to go into your school, or it shouldn't be. But it was for her. So she, or it was for her students, I guess, or her schools.
It wasn't an anomaly for me?
No, that's what I corrected. I said it was, it's not for her, but it was for her, her, the schools. Let's see, a board, a real board member, okay? But anyway, briefly, just want to say I've met with the parent congress, with the superintendent. I intend on making sure that a board member is at every parent congress meeting that you have, superintendent. I appreciate if you include us in on that schedule. Oh, so who's that? Oh. Oh.
What'd you say?
And I, oh, Cindy, okay.
Oh, I can go next. Is that what you said?
I just, I also want to give a shout out to the Buffalo Parent Teachers Organization for their pick a reading partner. Ina Ferguson hosted that, hosted that at the Delve and Grider. And Board Member Woods already talked about that. But I just want to say that literacy is so key, and we appreciate the efforts and free books and great, sort of great things that were going on there. I met, thank you. I went on the talk show with WFO with Sam Rafferty. Good listening, if you haven't heard it. I am Sharon Cotman. Inner High. I met with the Inner High students. I am asking our students, board members, to pull together a meeting date for us to try to meet with our student board members. And to, they're talking about doing a voting drive. I want to give a shout out to the staff that's working with them. They're doing a phenomenal job, et cetera. Say Yes, I am on their, their planning committee again, their steering committee. I took capital budget as a, we've had several meetings with, in regards to that. And I attended MST's Black History Program. And last Friday, I met, I went to Neil Dobbins from, the founder of MVP's annual birthday party, which was a basketball game. And I do miss Neil. And for those of you who don't know, I often ask myself, what will Neil say or do? Trust me. In addition to that, the Big Five work. And in moving forward, we will be dealing with the diversity, equity and inclusion. I think it's next week in regards to moving agendas across the state. So that's just a little bit of what we've done. I have, in addition to that, board members, a motion. And then following that, we'll do our bereavement and then we will conclude our meeting if no one else has anything else to share. Okay. Board, may I have a motion authorizing the district to pay an amount not to exceed $90,000 to fully settle litigations in State Supreme Court with index number 1-808-457-2020? Okay, okay, I got two down here. Somebody, you guys are going to have to, in the future starts, because I can't, I can't do that.
Start shouting.
Yeah, start putting your hand up, do something like that. So we have Paul Lettwood and Cindy. Okay, sorry. All right. With that, without further ado, today, our bereavement list will be.
All in favor?
All in favor, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Any, any oppose? Thank you, Nate, for keeping me honest. It's late, okay? I'm letting y'all know. Without further ado, we'll do our bereavements and then we will entertain a motion to adjourn, okay? Thank you. This week, our bereavements are being read by Vice President Dr. Evans Brown. Okay. So bereavements for February, December, well, today is February 15th. December 29th, Brenda Mountcastle, teacher aide at Math Science and Technology Preparatory School. January 18th, Peter Byrne, husband of Eleanor Byrne, and art teacher at Leonardo Da Vinci High School. January 27th, Thomas Suche, senior, father of John Suche, a CTE coordinator for the BPS Adult Education Division. January 28th, David E. Holtz. Okay. Class, retired head machine repair mechanic. January 28th, Lum Smith, beloved retired Buffalo Public School administrator and renowned historian. January 29th, Jacqueline Kelly, retired social studies teacher. February 4th, Silas Ezra D. Jeanette, student at the Claude and Hamlin Park School Number 74. Grandnephew of Board President Sharon Belton Cotman. Cousins Khalil Cotman, technology teacher at Bennett High School. And Nicole Cotman, CTE teacher at Build Academy and Buffalo Academy of Performing Arts. February 7th, Steve Poliacheck, check, sorry. Retired teacher coordinator, coach and administrator. February 12th, Christine Bowles Hardaway, long-term former substitute teacher at school number 74 and Highgate Heights School Number 80. February 1st, Lola McDowell. Worked for 30 years, hired first as a teacher assistant at school number 48 and the Adult Learning Center, and retired from Dr. Lydia T. Wright, daughter of Vivian Logan. May we have a moment of.
I'm sorry, mother.
Mother?
Mother of Vivian Logan.
Mother of Vivian Logan. May we have a moment of silence? Thank you.
I'll look this way this time. Motion to adjourn?